Steven Agapi, Tetra Tech, District Engineer. Aside from the agenda items, we don't have any updates.
Questions for our engineer?
A couple, Bill. I don't know if this one's yours, Steven, or Tony's, but water meter replacement project, our good old friends at Fort Line. It's my understanding, we sent the letter that we talked about at the last meeting, and it's my understanding that they have come back, and I do not know with what they have come back, but my question is, where are we on certificate of substantial completion?
Tony?
Is that engineering or legal?
I think that was-
Because it's usually created by the engineer.
Yeah, I think there was a remaining issue, and I saw some emails, I think late last week or nearly this weekend.
Well, the reason I bring it up is that it's my understanding we're having some issues. Chris, jump in, because I'm assuming that this is public information, that we're having issues with the equipment. The MIUs are failing. And my issue is, is that typically when you issue a certificate of substantial completion, it starts the one-year warranty clock. At this point in time, I don't think the clock started ticking. And we're having failures of equipment that was supposed to have a five-year life. And my deal is, is okay, what's up?
I can give you a brief update. The last form we needed from them was the certificate of substantial completion, that form. We just turned over to Tony for his review, just to make sure it was legally sufficient. Then he'll go back then to sign. We have been having some equipment failures on the MIUs and other pieces, and they are being replaced at no cost, under warranty by Zenner.
Yeah, I got that email, I think, on Monday.
Yes, sir.
I'll get back to it tomorrow on a run to format to submit to them.
Well, my engineering question on that is that I understand warranty and everything, but is it labor and/or labor and parts?
Parts only.
Or better, yes, is it parts and/or is it parts and labor?
Parts only.
That's our contract with them for the specs?
That's their warranty. Yeah, they do not-
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that, Chris. There's two warranties involved here. Correct, Steven? There is the contractual warranty we had when we signed the contract with them for everything is good for one year. That's parts, labor, and everything. Then we have signed a maintenance agreement with Zenner, not with Fort Line. And that's for warranty that might have something totally different, which might say parts only, might say parts and labor. That is, that's over here. I'm talking about the one-year warranty that we had from the contractor. I am positive that it would require, I've never seen an N1 in an engineering project that's not parts and labor, and it's not with the manufacturer. It is with the prime contractor, i.e. Fort Line.
That'd be a great question for Tyler, and unfortunately, he's not here right now.
So, I think we need to do that, because my thing is, is that myself, I wouldn't dot the eyes on the word certificate on a substantial completion until they show me that they've gotten beyond that point and that problem. I don't want to go out here and sign and accept this thing, issue the one-year warranty, knowing that we have pieces that are failing on supposedly a five-year warranty. I mean, that's not a real good start.
Have all of the meters been installed?
Just about. We have a few, and US Water's picked up this week and started installing the last of the large-scale irrigation and potable water meters, and told us they have done the next three to four weeks, so.
The answer is not yet.
No, certainly.
But mine's more on a parts, and again, differentiating Zenner's labor contract that we just signed. I totally agree with that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the agreement we signed with Fort Line. And that has ramifications, because it has ramifications on that certificate of substantial completion. And less than until, in my opinion, that they show that they have gotten beyond that problem, I am not of the opinion that they have achieved substantial completion.
And again, the articulation of the problem is the parts and meters themselves are failing?
We're having, we're having stuff, pieces of the meter, ETRs and MIUs, as I understand it, that are still continuing to fail. And we shouldn't have that.
At a rate above what would be considered acceptable. Is that correct?
To me, yes.
We need a complete record of what's failing, and the date and the name of the piece of equipment and when it was replaced.
We're generating those reports monthly now with stuck meters, reeds, and I have that information readily available.
Anything else for the engineer?
Yeah. The second thing is, we, after the earlier vote, I'm a little gun shy. We need to be starting Phase Two of the facility plan for the next 13, 15 ponds. And L is in the process, going back with what we discussed about the seriousness of the ponds, that she has found some ponds that were in Phase Three, which were the, let's say, the end-of-the-line ponds, the ones that weren't in quite a bad shape, that are now in bad shape, i.e. Daniel's Preserve. That pond's got like two-foot escarpments. And two years ago, when we did their original rating, they weren't there. So, the erosion is ticking. It's hurting us. So, my motion is, is that we authorize Tetra Tech to give us a contract proposal to proceed with the next 13, 15, whatever the Phase Two ponds were, as identified by L, because I think she would be the best person to go out and re-rate the ponds, and we might have some shuffling between the Phase Three and the Phase Two ponds. But we need to be getting that facility plan done for the next, for the next ponds.
And here's my comment to that, is I think the early we can get started, at least bid-
This is, no, this is, this is planning.
I know, but what I'm saying-
Planning.
Planning and getting to, you know, getting to a point where we can bid would give us the opportunity, if bids come back not favorable as they maybe did in the last time, it would give us time to take a step back, wait six months, rebid, or change bid criteria. So, I don't have a problem with moving forward with planning, but that doesn't mean anything around execution or approvals.
Yeah, it's planning. This is facility planning. Now, just keep in mind also, our non-compliance letters, and everybody needs to understand this. Our non-compliance letters from South Florida Water Management District on the Walden Lakes Lake Pond 126, which is the one that initiated all this, I dare you to find the term "cost-effective, beneficial, or economically feasible." They tell you, go do it. So, they don't care what the cost is. That's one of the problems we're working with. That's the reality.
If that's the case, then we need to look at, you know, what a fine would cost versus delaying it for a year or two years. I mean, that's, then it becomes cost benefit, so.
Ed, excuse, are you-
Yeah, I'm finished, yes, sir.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, good.
Ed, it was very clearly laid out for us a year or two ago, it may have been by you, that these ponds are living organisms, and they change over time. And you were just substantiating that prior understanding. I, I think that we ought to have an ongoing planning going on. That doesn't sound right, does it? We ought to have ongoing planning so that we know-
Like, like plan reviews?
Which lakes have to be moved up in lieu of others. And we can't just say that the plan from a year ago or two years ago is it, and it's going to be it forever.
Correct. It has to be flexible.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Has to be flexible. But I would make the motion that we authorize Tetra Tech to come back to the board with a contract, proposed contract, to perform Phase Two facility planning on the next 13 ponds, as identified by staff.
Can do that.
I'll second that.
Can I give anything to say on that?
All favor say aye.
Oh, excuse me.
Could it be repeated, please?
Oh, say it again.
That have Tetra Tech come back to us at the next meeting. That gives L plenty of time to identify the 13 ponds that would be the Phase Two ponds. And come back to us with a proposal to prepare a facility plan to be able to secure SRF funding for the next 13 most erosion-problemed ponds.
Are you okay? And I do have discussion in regards to, I don't think it's a number. I think it's based on a severity classification.
Well, the reason we did 13 is we were trying to keep the dollars on a schedule. That's the only reason.
Well, but that's, so you're saying, what-
It may be that she, it may be-
What your assumption is that those 13 were all based on the same severity, that the dollar amount per square footage would be equivalent, and so it's a way to book it?
Right. And it may, it may be that she comes back, when she looks at the 13 that were in Phase Two, pulls two out, puts them in Phase Two, and pulls four or five out, saying they aren't that bad, and move them to Phase Three. So, it could be-
We got it all understood.
Okay, no.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Yep.
And I have a question.
All right. So, what you're saying is you want to reevaluate the ponds in Phase Two and Phase Three to move them around to a-
Staff do that, and inform them, and have them base their contract on which ponds filter down to be in Phase Two.
Next in line.
Next in line.
So, that's what we're doing, is reevaluating.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Agapi.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Code 40. Thank you, Mr. Engineer.
You're very welcome.
District Council, you have ponds on the agenda here. Do you have other items?
Just a few. On the June 1st meeting with the boards, I'll be attending by telephone. I'll be coming back from California under current plans. Also, I've had, been working with staff in sending out a cover memo with a corrective letter with regards to one digit that was off in the mail notice that went out, and also having the ads pasted in the paper for the hearing of June 8, and finalizing the bond validation complaint, and it should be filed tomorrow or Monday.
Did those letters go out with all the three attachments?
I don't know. That's, yeah, ST has been handling all of that.
I never saw anything so screwed up in my life as that. I thought we had done it once, and we'd be able to repeat it. The only difference was we're sticking three envelopes, three letters inside of an envelope instead of one. I don't know how that can be complicated.
Hopefully, it's going out by now.
But for some of the board members, I don't even know that you're aware. What we did is we wrote in non-legalese a letter to explain to the public, I don't know how many phone calls you had, but I had over 40, of people saying, what did that letter say? And the issue is, we wrote another one, and Tony went through it, Russ went through it, and it now explains, I think, a little bit better than just legalese. The question came up, why did we have something, the phone in to, Chris, why did we have stuff in boldface? We have it in boldface because it's a legal document? The state says you're going to put it in boldface.
And that scary language about it has to be sold, that's required by the statute.
That's required by statute. But we wrote another letter in good, clear English of what this is going to cost and why we're doing it.
You're making me think that you're Assistant Counsel now.
I've tried, but I don't think I'll make it. No, it's purely an engineering letter, Bill. Purely an engineering letter.
Did you have a question?
I sure do. Who had to pay for the second letter to go out, since it was a technical mistake by the attorney? Because I know I brought it to Chris's attention.
Let me back off, please. That letter was first drafted on April, I believe, 5th or 8th, and it was sent to about a dozen people, and 23 days later, after a dozen people had reviewed it, nobody caught it.
Was it brought to the supervisors?
Nobody. It was in your agenda packet, and nobody caught it then.
I don't remember seeing it.
And it was one digit, it was in the agenda packets for the May 4th meeting, I believe.
Okay. Because I know, I heard about the amount of money, by more than several.
Well, it was a typographical error, and it makes no sense numerically.
But they, they thought it was going to be an intentional typographical error, and that the comma was put-
Trusting people.
Technically in the wrong place to be, to hide the real amount. That's what I was told.
Why would we do that? That's ridiculous.
No, and also, if they didn't want to read, obviously, without all due respect to those individuals, it said the maximum amount is 24.8 million total. And it includes interest. So, 20 million maximum principal, that was in there.
All those people that think that way were for CNN, so.
But again, and I don't mean to sound defensive, saying it was my fault. Typically, the district management company, like Southern Trump, would draft that letter and send it out. I took the initial stab, and I said I sent it around to about a dozen people over a three-week period, and nobody caught it.
I asked the same, I asked the same question. And my only concern was, is at one time, that we were going to possibly put the letter that I had prepared, and then was corrected by Tony and by Russ, that we were going to send out two envelopes. And that's where I said, no, put them all in one. And that's, that we've agreed to that. So, I don't have a problem. The stakes are made.
But I will take responsibility, but to say it was part of the-
I'm just saying that I was asked. That was another question I've been asked, is who's paying for this second envelope to come out? I've been personally asked.
We are.
District is, yeah.
We are.
Well, and again, the, I'll call it the informal letter to residents, which are all going in the same envelope, as they posted. And that would have gone anyways, I understand.
Is anyone from your firm going to represent you at our June 1st meeting?
Yes. Mrs. Grayfield will be here. Lenore.
She's been here before.
Yes, I know. I remember.
I already cleared that with her.
Anything else?
No, sir.
April has it.
Oh, thank you.
For the record, just to clarify, because Mrs. Flaherty was concerned about the cost.
Can you speak up just a touch?
April White, your business manager, just one clarification, because Mrs. Flaherty is asking about the mailing cost, is we did ask initially for a non-legal letter to be enclosed with the legal notice. We did ask for that. And so, originally, we were, we were told that it couldn't go in with the legal notice, so we are doing two mailings.
But for clarification also, the first notice is the required legal notice. The second mailing with the cover memo correcting it is not the required legal notice, it's just a cover letter. And that was a good opportunity to send out-
The second letter.
The informal letter. In my opinion, if the informal letter had gone out with the technical legal notice, it could have posed a problem. And I express that, and I still hold that opinion.
Thank you.
Question for Tony, Bill. County road turnover status, just that we got any update of where we're at? Does the, what's the county waiting on, or what are we waiting on, or who's waiting on?
I've received the-
I'm still wanting that champagne.
Yep. I have, I've received the MyLars.
It's here.
It's here?
I received all that I need to give to the county last week. About a week and a half ago, the MyLars, they wanted MyLars with everything. And I think, we're still having a little question from WCI about the form of deed, but I think you all are working it out, Charles, is that correct? They want to, the county wants a warranty deed, and WCI is inclined to give a special warranty deed.
That is the only outstanding issue.
That's the only outstanding. And there are no, I just need to compile everything and get it to the town.
That's all I need.
Thank you, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Business Manager, April?
I have a couple of add-ons to my report, and I wanted to throw out a few dates, and I will also send this in email to you.
April, what, I'm sorry, where, where is your?
It is 3C.
Page 31?
30, yes. So, we're trying to escalate the board advance, the board retreat that we had spoke of. And I do have some tentative dates, so I didn't know if you wanted to discuss those tentative dates now.
Yes.
We're looking at, possibly considering June 22nd, the 23rd, 29th, or 30th. Four days.
You're going too fast.
22nd, 23rd, 29th, and the 30th.
What, what day's the week of those?
Thursdays, right?
I brought a calendar.
22nd, 23rd is out for me.
29th is a Thursday. Is the 30th a Thursday, too?
22nd, 23rd is out. And then we're looking, 29th to 30th.
Do you say Thursday, Thursday, Friday?
I think we're just looking at one day.
Thursday, Friday, 22nd, 23rd, so.
So, it's two Thursday Fridays in a row.
Exactly. And we only need one day.
Just one day.
29th is Memorial Day.
June.
June.
June 29th.
I'm sorry.
Might still be Memorial Day, but not the same one.
I wouldn't do that to you. Or me.
June 29th, what's that?
Can I get your calendar?
Now I got it, yeah.
29th and 30th, I could do either one of those.
Thursday.
Okay, so those are now four.
Thursday, Thursday and Friday.
And we're going to do this where?
Offsite.
Offsite, and we're going to-
Has to be in this county?
Oh, yeah, yes. It'll be a public meeting. But we're looking at, first, the Gateway Country Club, so if you have any connections over there.
Could I, could I-
After this, after that vote well ago, I don't have any connections anymore.
I've already, I've already made a phone call. We would like to stay in the district, but if not, I will look at some of the hotel facilities, like around I-75 or something.
Kathy has a question.
Yes.
I would prefer not the Thursday, because I go out with Freddie in the morning for my 20-hour trip around Gateway.
Okay, so it looks-
Can you reschedule?
Well, you know, no, it's every Thursday. It doesn't matter. So, I would prefer the Friday, the Thursday. Is that going to be a problem?
No, I was just saying-
Well, no, so we've narrowed down one day.
If we have two possible dates, and just make it easier.
Well, it looks like we're down to two possible dates anyway, 29th and 30th.
No, now we're down to 30th.
Do you have an idea in your head about the time of day?
I'm, I'm looking at, we haven't, we haven't worked on the agenda, but I'm thinking and visioning that we start in the morning, you know, we do a boxed lunch or pizza or something, and then proceed to the afternoon, and try to wrap it up, you know, definitely by 5:00 or 6:00.
April, that's July 4th weekend.
June 29?
Yes, correct.
It's July 4th weekend.
What are you talking about?
July 4th. The 30th is July 4th weekend. The Friday is that weekend.
Yeah, some people are going to make this the 4th a long weekend.
Oh, okay. And we can work on another series of dates, if necessary. This was just our first step.
And you've got a conflict on 23rd?
Yeah, that, the 20th through the 23rd of June.
Okay.
I'm booked.
So, what about the 29th?
Kathy doesn't like the 29th.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not going anywhere, so the 30th doesn't bother me, but it is the 29th.
Why don't we say tentatively the 30th?
Okay.
And in the meantime, you work on an agenda-
Okay.
And, and place, and then we'll confirm that.
In morning and afternoon, so we're looking at about eight hours.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I mean, max.
That's an awful lot of time.
I don't think they're max.
We got an awful lot of problems.
You've been talking a lot of time.
Agree on that.
And I will sleep off switching with Freddie.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item that I wanted to bring to your attention that's not on the report is, I sent you an email on Monday, May 8. I sent you some pictures of the usage of our soccer fields on a Sunday afternoon.
I saw some signs out there.
Right. So, the soccer fields are technically closed for maintenance now, so the gates are locked, so it's not an immediate issue. But when the soccer fields open again, what I wanted to consider, and we don't have to make a decision today, but unless you want to, possibly consider closing the soccer fields on the weekends. This does have, when the large unsanctioned groups of players come in and use the fields, they were adults, it does have a huge impact on, on the turf. And of course, we're not getting any revenue to recover the maintenance cost on that. So, I just wanted you to be aware that it's been for several weekends now. It's not an immediate issue, because the fields are closed. But I wanted to toss that out there, that there's, there's no leagues scheduled, unless there was a league scheduled on those weekends, but to only open it on the weekends for the leagues, and not necessarily open to the public.
That's, I would never agree to that. I don't even like the fact that we lock them up, period. If there's a, if there's weekends, if we're seeing a behavior, then let's call Lee County and have a sheriff come over and issue trespassing citations or whatever, because technically, we'd be trespassing if they don't have a permit and don't live.
I don't know, would, would that technically-
Well, if the fields are closed or locked and not supposed to be there.
No, but that's the whole point.
No, they're open.
We shouldn't be locking the fields, period. I mean, that's where we pay good money, so my kids and everyone else, and hopefully bocce ball at some point in the future.
Yeah, I don't think we can trespass if the fields are open.
Yeah, but if, don't we have, what's the, what's the stipulations on the field? It says permit only or gateway residents?
If a permit's required only, if it's gateway residents only, then they're not authorized individuals, and you can tell them to leave. If they don't leave, you call the Sheriff's Department and advise the Sheriff's Department you told them they're not authorized to be there.
Yeah, let's, let's use enforcement that we can enforce.
I think the first part would be to tell them from staff perspective-
Well, someone has to tell, and that's the-
Correct. You're not authorized to be here, and then if they refuse to leave, or they don't leave, then you call the Sheriff's Department, say, the person is not authorized to be here. I've told them to leave, they have not.
Yeah, and I have reservations about that. Sometimes the staff that discovers them on the weekends are the part-time staff from the pool. And these are, can be large groups of typically adult males. And we have had some precedent set where staff has problems with bad behavior when they're confronted, and staff does not feel comfortable or safe in that environment approaching a crowd independently.
Okay, simple, yeah, simple solution. You go to the concession stand, you turn on the mic, you say, anyone who is on the field that does not have a permit or a gateway resident is asked to leave, any violators will be whatever. And then that way, there's no personal confrontation. 10 minutes, 15 minutes after that, then they can call the authorities. That way, there's no face-to-face confrontation. Is that acceptable?
I think it's appropriate, then. You can tell the law enforcement that you asked them to leave, they did not, and then you can address the groups.
But, you know, but solving a problem by shutting off access to residents, I would, I just don't agree with it.
Well, well, and it wasn't just that. We also, we're looking at it from the, the impact on the turf, that asking them to leave doesn't keep them from coming into the park. They're, they're playing on the, on the turf. And so, we were looking at it from that perspective, from a maintenance perspective.
I know where you're coming from. It's a very good place, but I, I don't agree with it.
Is it correct for me to categorize these as just young men who are looking for some recreation on Saturday and Sunday, for instance, and have no league affiliation? They're just, is this just a bunch of pickup soccer, like a pickup basketball team?
That's what I'm thinking.
And we used to have a similar problem, where there's certain leagues that don't have set fields, so they will just kind of bounce around to available fields. And I think we eradicated the issue in the past by doing something very similar, which we had law enforcement come out and impose a no trespassing, because they were in violation. Once that happened two or three weekends in a row, the problem was solved. Very similar to kind of what has happened in the front park in the past.
Well, calling law enforcement, I just wanted to be, I wanted to be sure that that was, that was the desire of the board.
Yep.
I hear, hear no objection. That's what we'd like for you to do.
Thank you, April.
All right, any other questions for me on the management report?
Bill, please. Yeah, one, we're in this pond bank project right now, and most of the residents along all the ponds are utilizing their own water to water the new sod that's been placed down. The guy that comes by with the boat that sprays the water, I think he's trying to figure out a way to make the, the rocks grow, because the water doesn't hit the grass. So consequently, residents are using their own water. I saw it this month in my bill, my bill went up eighty bucks for irrigating, basically the extra irrigation to be able to take care of that area, which I, doesn't bother me to, to incur the cost of the irrigation. What is bad is that we're incurring the wrath of the rate schedule, which means we're slipping down from tier one to tier two to tier three, and it gets real expensive. I'd like to see if we could take and have for those that are on the lake doing the irrigation, which is going to be sixteen, eighteen, twenty-six, eighty-six, and eighty-seven, which is going to be probably four, five hundred residents that are watering the grass to make this stuff, make it work, that we figure out a way in our billing system to eliminate the tier-two, tier-three exposure. What it boils down to, Bill, is we go from thirty cents, thirty-three cents a thousand, to a dollar twenty-five a thousand, to five dollars, I believe, is the number per thousand, as you go up. Well, if you're watering this, you have to water this daily, and twice a day if they, you do it right. And the issue is, you use one heck of a lot of water and you go past our tier brackets, which are usually set for just watering a yard, no problem.
I, I understand, I understand totally.
So I'd like to see if we could do that.
Yeah, and I think issuing some credits or something similar to, to.
That's another possibility.
We still have a boat, don't we?
You have a boat, but I don't think you have a pump to pump much water.
Pump the water, put, put, take the boat out and pump the water around.
Well, at the next board meeting, I'll bring a purchase order to approve that purchase. I said at the next board meeting, I'll bring, I'll bring a request to authorize that purchase, so we can have, be able to pump the water up there.
On the pump, we have the boat.
And then we gotta go get a captain.
We, yeah, we, we've been talking kind of tangentially, tangentially for, for weeks, if not much, about looking at our rate schedule, our water rate schedule, and maybe we ought not to kick that can down the road much longer and, and get it, at least get it in front of us. If you could arrange that.
Chris is, Chris is along that same line.
Chris, are we okay? Can, can you do that for us? Get the, at least get the rate schedule in front of us so we can see in black and white what Mr. Tinkle was talking about.
We'll pull out some of the bills and see what it impacts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I believe Mrs. Flaherty had a question.
No, but it could wait till consent agenda.
Okay.
My question.
Thank you, April. District manager, Chris?
I'll make this quick, we had a pre-meeting for Pelican Pond Irrigation Project, large-scale project will be starting there in the next thirty, four, five days. Senator Brooks is gonna get a new LED entry gate tower. Lake One Sixteen is basically complete, and Twenty-Six underway and about seventy-five percent complete. And with the exception of some sod and grain boxes, One Eighteen is complete. The contractors have started working over on Eighty-Six and Eighty-Seven, which is Bristol Park and Cypress Creek. And the work is all on schedule, no change orders, so it's, we'll be right along. We will be coming back because we're gonna need to buy some additional material and pins.
Paint?
Pins.
Oh, pins.
Pins and some material from ProPEX, basically some of the slopes, we're using a little bit more material and some of the corners, a little more material, but it'll probably be about twenty percent of the original. But in the grand scheme of things, the material cost was three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the four-point-four million construction project, so it's a very small percentage. And we're also a contractor out at the pool, is putting together some bid specifications, got the bid to fix the doors and the showers and some of the tiling and they're dilapidated, and also we'll be doing some work to upgrade the dog park on the entry there, too. And I also wanted to introduce Michael Tish, he's gonna step up and give you a minute of background. He was recently hired as our Public Works Director. And he'll be taking on a lot of that administrative work that will inherit the road turnover.
Oh, okay.
Also working on the ponds and the parks and rec site.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Sue Pires, my name is Michael Tish, as Mr. Shoemaker told you. Got over twenty-four years' experience with Public Works background with Charlotte County and Lee County. Primarily have a transportation background, done everything from roadway design to construction, drainage design and construction. Swift Mud, Southwest Florida, permitting, do, done access management, a lot of bicycle pedestrian facilities, design and construction of those, and pavement management, some of the things I've talked to Mr. Shoemaker about that we'll be looking at in the future. And also did quite a bit of CIP estimating for both Charlotte and Lee Counties, and I'm quite proficient at it. So happy to be here and looking forward to doing lots of projects with you all.
Stay at the podium for just a minute while the board members see if they have any questions for you, Michael?
No, sure.
No, welcome.
Welcome.
Great, great job.
Thank you very much, Michael. Any, board members, anything for Chris?
No.
Thank you very much, Chris. Utility manager?
Afternoon. Kenny Hall, utility manager. The only thing I have today is the Danes Preserve lift station is completed. We authorized that on March second for a total of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We did incur an extra thousand dollars on this station due to, when the station was stripped down and bypassed, we got down into the well and the base elbows were completely corroded and had to come out at a cost of five hundred and forty dollars per one. The contractor had them in stock, so it was just do, do, in, out. Other than that, we had the, the station in a eight days offline, and we purchased a bypass pump, the Thompson Bypass Pump. It was flawless, sat there for eight days running on that pump. We got twenty-three hours of service out of that pump so far, and for the eight days that it was online and running that station, we burned a quarter tank of diesel fuel. So it's, you're not gonna get anything better than that. And the only thing that was bad about that station is that when we, when the station was put back on, before it was put back online and they cut into the force main, the valve ahead of it to isolate it failed. It went, it did not work, so we had to go down to Gateway Boulevard and isolate it there. So there's another six-inch force main plug valve that completely failed, it has a two, two thousand four stamp on it, and it did, it did not work. Other than that, the station is back up online, operational, we have a final walk-through tomorrow morning, and everything left to be, oh, and that station is to be fenced in. Now we'll be done, I believe, next week or two weeks down the road, somewhere there when they can get in there, and we're gonna put a fence around it, and that's it. It's brand-new now, that station should give us a good fifteen, twenty years of service out of it. Everything else was great, and that's.
Excuse me, questions for Kenny?
Yeah, Kenny, what's the, we talked about a while ago, I don't know if you were in here, when we were talking about the Zentimeters and the MIUs and the ETRs and all that.
Yes, sir.
What, what kind of time are you spending doing what I would call labor-related fixing ETRs, fixing MIUs, and things that, to me, are under warranty?
For a week, I would say Mary's probably, she can probably change out a MIU.
This would be you, Mary, or Pete?
It would be me, it would be me, Mary, or Isaac. We spend maybe an hour or two. It's not, the MIUs are in various, have various problems. And the, the ETRs, we pretty much put that, that to bed, we haven't had, we don't have nearly as many as, once they came in, did that final audit and went through and went through every single one of them, that issue's pretty much, I mean, you're gonna have, you know, a certain amount, it's just inevitable, but, when it was, when, when they came through and did that final audit and we were, they, they brought in and they had five or six guys out there going over every single meter, we went through and replaced pretty, pretty much all of the ones that were in. And since that time, it's just, it's not very big.
We're starting now to bring in customers in the Prado and Pestoia areas.
Yes.
Are those readings such that we're not having to go out and stick up any more amplifiers or repeaters?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, with, with, especially Pestoia and the Prado extension, we're gonna be adding probably, I mean, we, we were looking at that yesterday, so we're probably, by the time that's said and done and everything is built, we're probably gonna have maybe six MIURs to run that. And like I say, when we put those MIURs out, if it doesn't work and we move it or we don't need it, we just take it back out and it goes back into rotation, it'll go out and to be, you know, it could be a water meter or irrigation meter, go on to it, it's.
They're providing the, again, the meter and we install it, the MIUR?
Yeah, the, we, we have those installed. And with, 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 you say, with Pelican Preserve, especially the new part, it's only gonna be one per house, there's our master meter, so we're only gonna have one, which really reduces the amount of volume and data.
Irrigation versus potable.
Right, when you have the two per, per residence, well, with this one, we only have one, so that really cuts down on the volume. So my estimate would be about five to six MIURs by the time it's all said and done for Pelican Preserve.
And Chris, how close are we to having a system that will allow us to track work orders? Where, let's say in the case of a meter repair, that's a work order that comes in, we can determine how many, and we might have some kind of system today, but I know, I think we've had conversations around a system that we'd probably need to put in place maybe down the road, so we can track these areas.
Time accounting.
Yeah, time accounting for, for our areas.
A work order system, but you can't separate, it's not by function. You look at the customer and historical work order, it's done and what happened, but if I wanted to go in there and pull up, let me have all the meter repairs versus, it's not, have that capability.
And that.
Not to say we couldn't add it.
Add it as part of the product offering, or it would be a different?
Part of billing system.
Okay.
Kathy?
Yeah, would it possible to please have a written report?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny, thank you very much.
Sure.
Next on the agenda is committee reports, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, Phil?
Phil Meezy, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. First thing is, I'd like to ask the board's indulgence to add something to the agenda, it's been discussed with a couple of you. Unfortunately, because of the way our meetings are scheduled, we have difficulty sometimes getting things to you soon enough to get them in your, in your board book. As you're well aware, because you've already approved a couple of them, we are, we have this downspout project going in Pelican Preserve, where we are connecting to the downspouts out into the ponds to avoid erosion of the ponds. We're already working in a couple of neighborhoods, which you approved, Valentina and Avila. We have three more neighborhoods that we would like to get started on, and the reason we bring it to you now is contractors are tough to find, and the rainy season is coming, and we would like to get these jobs done. So we have three of them, one of them is for the Toscana neighborhood. That would be a contract with Copeland, not to exceed forty thousand dollars. The next one is with the Monticello neighborhood, and that's again with Copeland, not to exceed ninety-nine thousand dollars. And finally, Portofino, and we, we would like authorization to, not to exceed a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and that one's with CAS Asset Management.
Would you hold it right there, please?
Sure.
Or, do any board members have objections to these add-ons to the agenda?
I talked, no, I don't, I talked to Bob Gephardt and ready to go with all three of these.
Yeah.
If there's anybody in the public.
I will, I will.
We have the funds, by the way, available for this.
Excuse, just one second, anybody in the public wants to comment upon these additional items that we're gonna discuss this evening regarding Pelican Preserve? Hearing done, please continue.
Okay, so we have the money in the funds available to do this work, so we would like the board's authorization to proceed with these three new projects. So it would be Toscana, not to exceed forty thousand, Monticello, not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, Portofino, not to exceed a hundred and eighteen thousand. This is for the Downspout Initiative.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion on the basis that the funds are available and it's been approved by your ponds group and your P-PAC.
And P-PAC has approved it, yes.
I'll make that motion to approve.
And I have a second. Any conversation? No. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, pose for zero. Phil?
Thank you very much. The other issue really relates to something that's gonna come up a little bit further along on your agenda, and that's item six B, but it has the, it's the whole area of conveyance of the assets in Pelican Preserve, in the Cypress Grove area, to, to the CDD. And we, in the P-PAC, are concerned, there are formal ways of checking out some of these areas, particularly the roads. The engineers have reviewed the roads, and we have procedures with regard to the ponds, and Tony looks at the legal part of it, but there are things that are not covered by some of that work. Specifically, some of the monuments, some of the landscaping is not in good shape. And we feel that there should be some kind of provision for P-PAC or our agent to take a look at those things, and we have already done so in tract L before the CDD accepts conveyance of any of these areas. We, we just feel that some of these other things need to be looked at, and in fact, we presented these previously. We have some problems along Cypress Grove Drive with regard to safety, with regard to lighting, and also with regard to landscaping. And we feel there needs to be some kind of a provision for us to get in on that. So we're, P-PAC actually has passed three things at its last meeting. Number one, we're recommending that the board not approve what you're being asked to approve on six A, which is the Pelican Preserve Tract L Phase Five, Solero Street, until we get a chance to review that. We are also recommending that the board direct Tetra Tech to re-review all of the roads before those are accepted. The problem is that we are finding on some of the roads, and some of this has to do with construction vehicles that have been going on the roads. There is, there are problems on the edges of the roads that we feel need to be corrected. And third, as I mentioned, we wanna, we wanna have a chance to look at some of these areas that are not covered by Tetra Tech, not covered, obviously, by the legal process, and also not by the ponds process, which mainly is the monuments, some safety issues, lighting, and landscaping. So we're asking the board to, to come up with some process where we can get involved in this before these conveyances are made. We're, we're concerned about having these things transferred to the CDD and us expending funds that should be spent initially by WCI, Lennar, to correct things before we accept them.
Thank you very much. We have folks from WCI here that are gonna be speaking to that in a little bit, and if I may, I may ask you to return to the podium to help us fill out the details.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think just for clarification for the record, I think it's item six B is the Tract L.
That, that's right.
Six A, then six B.
Oh, six B, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, no, just making sure we're clear.
Yeah, so six B, well, it, it, as I understand it now, Tony, that's just part of.
That's correct.
Tract L, it's just Solero Street.
Correct.
Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have a consent agenda, item five, A, B, and C. I know that there are a couple of amendments for the minutes that we want to talk about. Are there any ones, any board members that want to talk about items five B and/or five C?
Five C.
Five C, okay. Would you start us with five A, please?
Five A, line twenty-one.
Do you have that, Chris?
Page, agenda page thirty-seven, line twenty-one, okay.
Page, page what?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, agenda page.
There we go.
Okay. Line twenty-one.
What's the catch?
April White.
Business versus operations.
Okay.
April, we're gonna, I think we're gonna get April's promotion in one way or another.
She's the business manager and not the district operations manager, so that needs to be corrected. And then the other thing throughout the, that I've requested quietly before a couple of times, that it's not Ms. Flaherty, it's Mrs. Flaherty.
And where's that at?
Oh, that's throughout the whole thing. Okay, line fifty-eight. Want me to go through all the lines?
Sixty-five.
Yeah.
We'll have someone else.
I mean, I don't care if she puts K. Flaherty, but not Ms. Flaherty. But I prefer Mrs.
We'll have somebody else who gets paid for doing that go through that and correct all of those, and you're okay with the business manager, it's your adjustment, I trust. Any, anything else on five A? Kathy, would you go then, please, to five C?
Five C, okay, this goes to Ms. White, N-TAC again, the contract about, yeah, it's agenda page forty-six. Did we get any other information about the technology?
The status on that is, one of the companies, we're no longer providing the services we were looking for. We sent out to two, two companies, and just today, I sent out another one to the revised company that Mr. Banks has been helping me with that, and so we do have two, two RFPs vetted, and we're waiting on, but one of them just went out today.
All right, thank you very much.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the adjustments to the minutes as noted?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further conversation on that? All in favor, say aye. 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 Vote four, zero. Okay, the administrative agenda action items, 6A, Gateway Acceptance of Utilities for Materita IV and Castella II. There are folks from WCI that I believe are prepared to discuss this with us?
Yes, Vice Chairman.
Please continue.
Okay. Good afternoon again, Supervisor Tinkell. Good to see you again.
Good.
Given for the record, Charles Mann with Pavee's Law Firm here on behalf of WCI on item 6A and 6B. I'll just take 6A for now and then come back up for 6B if that's okay. The -- in the agenda packet, the staff recommendation is for board approval to accept the utility systems for Castella II and Materita Phase IV, and we agree with that wholeheartedly. Just a couple of minor comments to make. One, just clarify for the record that that also includes the reduction of the bond down to the 10% maintenance level for three years, which is provided for in the permit criteria manual. I don't think that goes without saying, but that was in there for the next agenda item, we just wanted to make that clear. And then the other thing is, I believe it was requested that Castella Phase II be placed on the agenda as all of the permit criteria had been met and everything had been signed off on, but that was based, and I wasn't there, but my understanding is there was a meeting between WCI and Tetra Tech in the last either several weeks or recently, and I believe the Tetra Tech representative was pretty confident that Castella I had already been approved by and accepted by the board. When we went back and looked at the recent minutes, we didn't see that. So if in fact it has been accepted, then I've got nothing further to say on that. If it hasn't, we'd ask to add on to the agenda, similar to what happened with the P-PAC, a new item, to just include Castella I. As you'll see in the packet, Castella I and II were both submitted by Mr. Caldwell, WCI, back in, I think, December, as two separate sets of documents, but all as one package, and it kind of makes sense if in fact this board hasn't already accepted those. And I'm just not sure. I didn't see it. Maybe the representative from Tetra Tech can weigh in on that, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Just hold on there for one second. Tetra Tech representative, do you have anything to help us with, or Chris, do you have anything to help us with Castella I?
I'm familiar with I. I've only been working on these two.
Please.
Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech. Castella I, we did -- we go through the process with the PCM of reviewing all the utilities, and we did recommend it for acceptance.
And when was that?
I do not recall the date off the top of my head, but...
I think in -- if I may?
Please.
I found an email from Tyler, January 25th, to Joel Bolkstad, RWA. Regards to utilities in Castella I and II, Tetra Tech has already provided the recommendation for the board to accept, although to date only Phase I have actually been accepted by the board. That's according to an email from Tyler. And then there was a further question about how to accept in a limited way, but that's from Tyler as of January 25th, and Chris, I don't know if you have anything different on that, Castella I or...
I have to look into the reports.
He thought it was accepted, but...
Well, I don't think we ought to proceed with Castella I if we don't have it in front of us on the agenda with everybody having done their homework.
And that's the last communications I found on it, Mr. Guy, just quickly going through my emails.
I'll research it and we can bring it back on the agenda if you want.
So we're going to limit this item to Materita IV and Castella II. Is that satisfactory with everybody? I'm sorry, I'm sure that's not exactly what you want, but that's what it's going to be because we don't have everything that we need on Castella I. Are you -- have anything to say on either one of these, Phil?
Bill? Bill?
Yes, sir.
Question. Stephen, you and Chris, up to speed, everything's good on this?
I believe so, yeah. We've submitted our memo.
You same way, Chris?
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. No, no. Two and four.
Oh, two and four, yeah. I researched it, and all the documents are there, and copies, and the necessary forms have been signed, and the utility systems are ready to go, we can operate.
I'd make the motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll have a second.
I have a second. Any further conversation on this item? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote four, zero. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to get to the one that we have some dispute about, approve and accept conveyance documents for 200 of the Pelican Preserve tract L, Phase 5, Solero Street. Charles, you want to...
Yes, please. And real quick on the last topic, if we could just ask that if in fact you find it's accepted, to the district manager you let us know, or if in fact not, if we could place that on the next agenda. I just wanted, again, reiterate that the submittal came in together. They were both in the same letter, so if you could look at that, and then absent, barring seeing any problem, if we could get that on the very next agenda, we'd like to see. Thank you. Roadway, which hopefully isn't that controversial, but maybe there's some other comments. I would just run through the agenda item recommendation to the board from staff that asked to approve, and this is Solero Street, I just want to make sure, there's a reference in here to tract L, Phase 5, and it was part of that, but this is really a separate part just for Solero. But it says approve the conveyance documents, including Storm Sewer and Solero Street, and reduce the bond to the 10%. And then there's several contingencies, which we don't have any objection to those contingencies or the problems, I just wanted to go through real quick. The first one is all documentation being deemed legally sufficient by legal counsel, which I believe has happened, although I understand legal counsel has an objection or issue potentially down below, but I don't understand that to be with respect to the documentation itself. Contingent on receiving an updated O and E, which I believe we sent previously and I think even resent here last week. Contingent on confirming the streetlights are leased by GS CDD from FPNL. That one, I don't know if staff's done anything to confirm that, but I actually have, just in the vein of being helpful. And again, if these are contingencies in the resolution, that's okay. You know, we believe they're met, but I did want to go ahead and -- I think I have it in here. Go ahead and, again, in the event you don't have this, just submit that for the record, which is an FPL agreement, and contrary to what we had asserted to staff, the FPNL agreement for the street lighting was between the district and FPNL, the one that we have is actually between the Pelican Preserve Association and FPNL. But the crux of the issue is that those streetlights are FPNL streetlights being operated, so we're obviously unable to give those the ability to sales to the district because they aren't ours, they're FPNLs, and they're subject to this agreement. And I'm told that the services district is actually the customer who's paying with FPNL on the power there. I don't know if that's correct or not. Maybe there's a new agreement. I think I'm hearing that that is correct, so may want to look at why there's not a -- or maybe there is and I don't have it, but a direct agreement between the district and FPNL. But be that as it may, the streetlights are not WCI's to give, and they actually are owned by FPNL. So again, that contingency can be followed up and confirmed by council. And then contingent upon collection of all review and inspection fees, which I think there seems to be a little bit of confusion about what's been paid or what the fees are.
We're clear.
Oh, we're clear, so there you go. Now, so I don't think there's anything there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification on the FPL. Charles, is that an FPL lease agreement? And it's the lease -- there's a lease agreement between Pelican Preserve Community Association, FPL, or FPL owns them, and there is no lease agreement?
There is a street lighting agreement that looks sort of like a lease agreement, but it looks to me to be very clear that they are FPNL streetlights, they're numbered and everything, that were put in, and FPNLs to remove, and so on and so forth. So not put in by WCI, not paid for, so on and so forth. But the one I have, and...
Typically, when you get their bills under those arrangements, they'll have identified, if they own them and energize them and pay, they'll have it separated into two components on the billing, so it's pretty clear if they own them because you pay a maintenance fee.
Yeah, I was just curious as to who the parties were.
And the parties, it is... The parties one I have shows Pelican Preserve Community Association as the customer, although apparently the district's paying, so I'm not sure. Don't want to cause more confusion, just want to reiterate that, you know, they're not ours to give, frankly, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that might just be an issue that we need to clarify in the agreement. We have that maintenance agreement and operations agreement between the district and the Pelican Preserve Community Association. We go back and look how that's addressed and whether or not there need to be any adjustments under that agreement.
Please.
It turns out that the way the billing has been coming in on these lights, even though they are currently owned by WCI-Linar, we have been paying for all the lighting in Cypress Grove. And we, as part of this conveyance, and it's not a direct part of it, but we want to have some kind of a settlement so that we can get retroactively, get some of the funds back that we -- for lighting that we've been paying for, that we should not have been paying for ever since Cypress Grove was constructed. Now, I don't know that we can precisely figure out exactly what this is, but some kind of a formula to recover some of those costs, because we've been paying for something, the district has been paying for something that we didn't own.
Hold on just one second.
Sure.
Phil, at the start of your statement there, you said that these streetlights are owned by WCI.
And they're -- well, they're not owned by WCI, but the power that they use should be paid for by WCI because we didn't own the property.
April, help me out.
If I understand correctly, we are talking about the lights, and there has been already an agreement that we have been working. It has gotten delayed, I've lost track of it, but there has been some email correspondence where I was working with WCI, and we were going to try to come up with a rational way to do that. It's not easy, but that is already on the plate. Do you not agree? That is, we've already in the works. It's a contingency on part of Cypress Grove for us to work that out.
April, are we talking about essentially a turnover issue?
Yes, for Cypress Grove. I think that credit would be addressed for Cypress Grove.
Who's paying for the light and the maintenance component up until turnover?
And if the district hasn't paid, how we're going to adjust that and take care of that?
Right, so we just need to come up with some sort of rational method that we can agree on, because, you know, lights have been phased in, and, you know, we don't necessarily have the beginning period and, you know, for all of the phase ends. So I think if we can just reach some sort of amiable agreement, but that's already on the table, and WCI has already agreed to work with us on that.
Okay, just as long as -- good enough for government work, right?
That's right.
Right. Now, one second, please.
Sure.
Phil, do you have anything more that you want to talk to us about 6B?
Again, Phil Meesey, I think the, you know, the problem here is we really haven't had a chance to look at 6B, and we are concerned, just kind of a general, on a general basis, that, for instance, the roadways, which have been accepted by Tetra Tech, I guess, but they haven't been looked at in a couple of years, and what we found on some of these roads is they've deteriorated over that period of time. And we are going to have to pick up the tab for that if they are conveyed without having been repaired by WCI. Additionally, we haven't had an opportunity to look at, and I don't know whether there are monuments and landscaping involved on CDD property or property that will be conveyed to CDD, but we haven't had a chance to look at that. And it goes, this really goes to the entire conveyance, the entire Cypress Grove area, and I must admit, I am not in a position where I can address specifically Solero Street.
Bill?
Sir?
Can we ask a question?
Stay, please, stay right there.
Yeah, I think we need Stephen, because I'm a little confused on this. This is for Solero, correct? Purely Solero.
Solero Road.
Solero Road. Stephen, are there any, because I thought I read a letter, that there are no, and this could be a dating issue. Are there any outstanding punch lists or anything from an engineering nature that would prevent us from going on and accepting Solero as Solero, period?
Stephen with Tetra Tech. The short answer to that question is no. A little background, this is just for the roads in Stormwater, which we have reviewed. Tyler has walked with RWA the road before they did a final lift and had the developer make repairs to the curbing, to the road, along with that final lift.
Are these punch list type items that Phil would be referring to?
Yes, I believe so.
And they are outstanding at this point in time, or they have our...
They're all completed.
So everything that was Phil's got concern of as problems have been punch list and completed?
From our point of view, the road and Stormwater is satisfactory.
As of when?
I believe sometime in 2016.
Say again?
Sometime in 2016. I don't know the exact date. Tyler was involved in that.
So that raises the question, what would have been the reason, and maybe this is Charles for you, is what would have been the reason that that wouldn't have been brought in in 2016, and we wouldn't even be talking about this right now? Nobody usually likes that question. We've had that problem before. Did it fall through the cracks, or what happened?
I'll take a stab, or I think David might be chomping at the bit, too.
Mike him?
David to the podium. Yeah, and while David's walking up, I think you're making an assumption that Phil's issues may have been resolved in the punch list, but Phil, when, this must be recent.
That's what I'm getting to.
Right? Your issues are still currently open.
Well, I'm trying to work for the...
Phil, I think even said he hasn't looked at Solero, just doesn't know. I think his items are with other stuff that's not before the board, and he just doesn't know.
And at this point in time, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I've done the research I can, and I find nothing, and I may not be happy to everybody in Pelican, but I don't find anything in our manual that ties all this together. I still see that. So to me, Solero stands on its own. If Solero passes the test and it doesn't have any issues, Solero should be subject to approval.
Let's hear from David.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Dave Caldwell with WCI-Linar for the record. To answer the question that Mr. Tinkell brought up, the reason the original inspection got done in December is when, you know, the engineers and the construction people were ready to have it inspected. But at that time, you may also recall, that was also in the general timeframe of us having to do video work, video inspection of the drainage lines and making sure all those lines were clear. Solero was, if I recall, was not one of those, that was pre-permit criteria manual requirement to do that. We volunteered to do the Solero area video work, so that had to get done before we could do this final acceptance to you.
So then the word that Stephen's talking about, when you say 2016, it was December of 2016.
Right. So we... We did that video work. Yeah, we just recently completed the video work and the clearance and resubmitted that materials, I guess, to Tetra Tech and your staff. The other issue was because of the merger with Linar in February, we have to redo all the documents to be informed of the new ownership through Linar. So that was another unfortunate but necessary delay that we had in the system.
Kathy?
And just Solero is totally separate permit package. Why isn't it part of Tract L? If you went back five or six years ago, it was part of Tract L, it was all part of the original permitting, but that was also originally designed and permitted as a multifamily piece. WCI decided sometime in the early post-bankruptcy period to do that as a single-family neighborhood. It was totally re-permitted, totally replatted, and that's why it's a separate submittal from Tract L.
That's enough for now. Please don't go away. Kathy has a question.
I have a question for the attorney for us. Attorney?
Tony? Kathy?
Yes, ma'am.
I have the memorandum from April 24th where it says you do not recommend that we accept that Solero Drive because it's part of Cypress. Do you still feel that way, that we should not accept this?
Yes, and there was some disagreement with Charles on that, and not in your agenda packet, and Ron DeBruer mentioned to me before the board meeting, was some correspondence of April 28th that I don't think we received until May 10th after the meeting book was put together, where Charles wishes to, again, push the point, I think he will argue it today, to have it accepted, but that's still my opinion and recommendation to the board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what are we talking about that happened May 10th?
It's when I received email with the updated ownership and encumbrance report in your letter of April 28th.
It was actually submitted on 4/28.
I'm saying when I received it.
But you mean from...
You.
We, I think, we submitted it to April.
I'm telling you when I received it.
Copy to you, which is how I think we were told we were supposed to direct stuff through April.
I understand, but I'm just saying May 10th.
Well, let me ask you this, though. The only thing that was outstanding on there, I think, was the O and E, which the proposed item from staff says contingent on the updated O and E, which if... which if, you know, if Tony hasn't had a cha, if, I'm sorry, if Mr. Pierce has not had a chance to review that, that's okay for him to be contingent. Because all I, all I said is, in my updated O and E, nothing new was there, so it was the same as the old one.
I'm fine with the O and E. I've had a look at it.
Okay.
I had a chance to look at it while we were talking about the other items. But again, the question that Mrs. Flaherty asked was, do I still have the opinion and recommendation that I provided in my April 24th, 2017 memorandum? Yes.
And that I would like to briefly respond to. As, as Mr. Caldwell said, this is not part of the other conveyance. It stands on its own. We agree with Mr. Tinkle. If you go to the Permit Criteria Manual, it talks about the fact that if you submit a project in phases, the district may decide to accept them phase by phase, or it may not to. This is not a phased project. In fact, as staff has noted in the agenda item recommendation, the plans were accepted and reviewed independently, not as part of the larger development phase. So in our mind, there's really no issue here as to it being part of another project. This came in, was permitted, approved, reviewed on its own as Solero Street. So it really has no relation to any of the other, of the other items. And, and Mr. Measy, is it? I'm sure when we get to the other parts of Tractel, he's probably going to have a lot of stuff. I may come up here and I may argue about some of those and think they were done, or maybe they won't, weren't, or whatever. But that's, to me, apples and oranges, and we feel we followed the Permit Criteria Manual. With this being a separate item, we've complied with everything in the Permit Criteria Manual, and we just feel it'd be a little unfair. And the other thing that, you know, there was the point brought up, time elapses and everything, and items come up. You know, if the process the district set forth is six months, it comes in, it gets inspected, we get through it, you know, that's fine, but then if we keep deviating from that, and the process drags on and on, then stuff probably will happen. It would seem to me, at least, that would be a little unfair to burden, you know, WCI with that. And we've come in, on today's date, with everything met per the Permit Criteria Manual. So the other thing that was noted was part of the same strap number because it was, or parcel ID number because it was platted as such, that's true. But as soon as we give the deed, that'll take care of itself, too, and it'll show up and everything. So we just don't believe there's an issue, and we believe we've complied with your rules, and don't really see anything in there that would allow for the board to tie this into the rest of Tractel and say, well, let's look over here before we're going to agree to this. So respectfully, you know, we believe that it should be reviewed on its own. And if there's nothing on Solero specific, which I think I heard from Tetra Tech there is not, then we believe it's ripe for, you know, review and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, an approval and acceptance of conveyance documents is a very important part of this board's operation. And inasmuch as we do not have an affirmative recommendation from our council, and inasmuch as we do not have an affirmative recommendation from Mr. Measy and the Falcon Preserved Advisory Committee, I am asking that the board move to defer this item to a later date.
Can't agree, Bill. We've got a affirmative letter from our engineer indicating that the work has been done. There is nothing that anybody has shown me that ties this in any way to our permit manual. I understand what, what Phil's saying in those, but I, I see no reason of holding this Solero Street hostage, none whatsoever. So my, my motion would be, we approve it.
I want to, first of all, I want to see, I, is there anyone who will make a motion to defer this item?
I'll make a motion.
Defer table?
Say again?
Defer table?
Table this item.
Well, I like defer in this kind of an item, but that's, but that's either one. Table is fine, if you want to use that. May I have a, a motion, a second to a motion to table?
I'll second, just to open.
There's no discussion. Once a motion to table is made, and second, it has to be voted on immediately without further discussion.
No, we've been not doing that, no.
We have been doing that while I've been in the chair.
Well, you're not in the chair, Bill.
I am in the chair. Thank you very much.
The way we have done it is we have had discussion, we've had second for the purposes of having discussion.
Not on a motion to table.
That's correct. I believe that's been the policy procedure and the parliamentary procedure, on motions to table.
We're not following our rules. I totally disagree, and I'll vote against it strongly.
I vote, do I have?
No.
Do I have a second to table?
Uh, no.
I have another second to table, all right? What is your motion, Mr. Tinkle?
My motion is based upon the advice and recommendation of our engineer, and the fact that nobody has been able to show me a tie that allows us to have this as a hostage against some of their street or some of their area in that community. That is not in our manual. I don't like it. I would like to change it, but that's not what we agreed to. That's not the way we run a business.
Give us your motion, please.
My motion is that we approve Solero.
May I have a second to that motion?
And I'll second to open discussion, as I have one more question.
Please, go ahead.
So, Phil, you have not reviewed this particular area, and so I just want to make sure that you're, that it's P-PAC stance that, that this is not a recommendation for us to proceed approving this? Because you wanted to review it, is that, okay. So if P-PAC comes back and said that there's issues after Tetra Tech has, has signed off, where does that, where does that leave us?
Makes us a mockery of our engineer.
There's a couple of people on the board that'd like to say something.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like Tetra Tech to please come up.
So, Stephen Agapi with Tetra Tech. So our review only covered the roadway and the drainage. So I want to make that clear.
That's what we're approving.
Okay, so if there's landscaping or monuments that get tied into that, that's beyond our scope of review. Just want to make that clear.
I, I have no problem if, if it's conditioned, I have no problem with that.
The general problem with this whole process is that there isn't provision for reviewing certain things. And so we haven't had a chance to do that.
I'm under the assumption that we have resolved the issue that we've had with some of the other areas where P-PAC was not engaged, and we're doing that now? But this, this is, this precludes that.
No, this is really the first area.
I think it's pre, is what it is. In other words, the work was all done, and now we're bringing P-PAC in. I don't know what the association was of P-PAC with going out with Tetra Tech on the inspection or any of that. But the issues are at this point.
May I, may I now?
At this point in time, it's clear to me.
John Williams from RWA, Ed, and also Tetra Tech. RWA, in May, we walked, okay? We walked Solero for approval. Bob signed off on it then. P-PAC was part of that. P-PAC was part of the, the reason that WCI went out and re-videotaped all the lines again.
May of 16 or 17.
Of 16.
16.
Okay? And then Bob has received all the videotapes with P-PAC. He's also looked at those. He attended the meeting that we just had here less than three weeks ago. I mean, I don't, I don't see where P-PAC is saying they're not involved when they, they're part of the meetings.
The, the misunderstanding here is that Bob Geppert is involved, because that's the ponds part of it. And that, and, and the ponds are acceptable. In this particular case, it's not a problem. We're talking about non-ponds, non-pond, non-street, non-legal issues. And that, that's where we, there are things outside of those areas that are problematic, as far as we're concerned. Now, whether there is such, there are such problems in Solero, I, I don't know. There may not be. Solero may be fine. And if, and certainly, if Tetra Tech has looked at the roads and they're still good, that's fine. But there are, there are potentials, and I, I guess I'm more concerned about going forward. If the board decides to, to accept Solero, I'm more concerned about going forward that there are lots of, you know, we've, we've got six or seven other conveyances to be done, where I know there are problems, because I've been sent pictures of them. There are problems on the roads, there are problems with the, with the.
And Phil, I understand that.
But we're not talking about Solero.
Yeah, we're not talking about, we're talking, at this point in time, I understand it purely Solero, that Solero, based upon the information we receive, has no problems.
No problem.
This is my understanding. Now, the issue of, that you bring up a sign each and the other, I, I don't know how that fits into this deal, because all, the only approval I'm making is for those that we have been told it's acceptable per our manual. Solero, period.
Unfortunately, the manual doesn't cover everything. So, but I will admit to you that I can't address, there may, Solero may be fine.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the other things I, I'm not touching those, I'm just talking Solero.
And then briefly, and I think this went to Supervisor Banks' comment, or question initially, is, you know, this was, this was noticed, P-PAC even had a meeting on this agenda, it's been out there. Obviously, I hear that there's some things that are perceived as needing adjustment in the process going forward, and that's fine, but I hope everyone can imagine how unfair it would be to us. We went through the process, you know, we, we hear, I haven't looked at it yet, I'm not sure. And, and we also are supportive of the resolu, or the motion to only approve what Tetra Tech said they've reviewed. That's fair to me, and that's acceptable to us. But it would be unfair to say, our, our advisory committee, which we don't have procedures for their advanced review, and, you know, is on the agenda, they're not really sure, because they haven't gone out there, so you're going to have to wait. I mean, from my standpoint, how long might I wait? And what if on the next meeting, a month from now, they say, yeah, we still haven't gotten out there? I just feel it'd be very unfair to us, everything we've done, if it wasn't decided upon today and tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you.
Chris, help us.
Just a clarification in the Permit Criteria Manual, why the district reviews water, wastewater, you know, the utilities, the stormwater, the ponds, and landscaping, and I stress that point, review under acceptance. There is no acceptance of landscaping by the district.
And, Chris, in, in your position, are you comfortable with us accepting Solero? Would it be your recommendation to accept this?
From a business perspective, they've gone through and satisfied all the recommendations of the Permit Criteria Manual, I think probably part of this maybe, if there's no standing for P-PAC in a review, I mean, informally, they work with us, and we appreciate it, and point things out along the walk through.
We just got to change that thing.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Hold on, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, just, just a comment on the landscaping. Even though the district does not inspect the landscaping, it comes with the property. So if we are acquiring a roadway or a tract of land and has landscaping that's going to need to be immediately replaced, I think that is an issue for the board to address. It may not be an issue in this transaction, but then you'd be acquiring a facility with issues because it comes with it. I mean, even though we may not inspect it. And I think there have been reports by Mariscape on some other roadways where there are landscape issues. May not, I don't think it's Solero Street.
Yeah, I don't.
But, just, just to clarify, my, my opinion on that aspect.
I drove Solero Street, and I'm telling you, I didn't see anything in there.
Yeah, and my understanding of Solero was okay, yeah.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Have you made a motion?
Yes, I have.
Would you, would you repeat it?
My motion is that we accept Solero as being complete on the advice of our engineer.
And I have a second.
And I have a second. Is there any further conversation? I hope not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, four zero.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Sometimes it takes us a little while.
If I, if I may, however, I hope that the board will, that we will be able to provide for something in the, on the future conveyances, because there's still, this is a very small chunk of a very big area. And there are definitely problems in some of the other areas.
Phil, what I'd like to do is to get, and you're, you're 100% correct. I'd like to get down that we, I've got to check with Tony first. We have got to get that Permit Criteria Manual fixed, because it has got holes in it, like it's unbelievable, that we need to address. But on some of the things he's talking about, of where we have P-PAC, and we have the ponds group and all that, somehow we have to incorporate that into this. We talked that, the meeting before, the meeting before, the meeting before, and we talked about that, but we don't seem to get it done. We need to have a system to where we aren't having an approval come from the engineer, and then somebody having a question about something.
Well, then it's who trumped who.
That's the problem we've got. So we've got to get around that and get those changes made. But I understand what Phil's saying, and that's why I went out there and I drove that, and I walked that area to see it, and I just did not see anything that trumped our own documents.
Thank you very much. Kathy?
Yes, could this be part of the agenda for the workshop in June?
Yeah, that's fine.
If you're talking about the Permit Criteria Manual, which, by the way, some of us who were on the board years ago spent a lot of time putting together.
It's a working document.
And, and when it's amended, if it is amended, there has to be a hearing and all kinds of things.
That's what I wanted to hear.
It, it does not happen overnight.
You were, you were gone, I think, last meeting, Bill, and they asked me to start putting together issues to talk about, and I would love to have those available for that workshop.
Yeah, that would be great. That'd be one of the items we can add.
All these projects that have been previously submitted and are active were submitted under the existing Permit Criteria Manual, so it's not going to change anything.
Not pre-existing.
It might be for the future, but right now, probably.
And that's, it is what it is.
And if we wait long enough, we won't have any.
And if you can, if you can maybe coordinate or have some open dialogue with Chris prior to the board advance, so we can have some recommendations on how to proceed.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, may we proceed to item 6C, approve the revised scope of services to the roadway landscape master plan. Who is our facilitator on this item? April, please? 6C.
April White, your business manager. So, as we know, when I first got here, February of, of last year, we started this landscape master roadway plan, to redo the landscaping along the roadways. And so we didn't have a whole lot of momentum to begin with. It was a big project, and we were having some meetings. And the more that we found out, once the utility manager got on board, the more information that we found out about the irrigation system, the further away our vision with our master plan seemed to get, because it seemed like possibly we were getting the cart before the horse. And so we were, we're trying to collect information, and finally, we got to a point where we lost the Landscape Advisory Committee for various reasons. And we have, we have sparked some interest throughout the community, and we do have a list of people. And so there is, there is definitely some interest, but we have been having some very productive, I think, admin meetings with staff, and Ms. Flaherty got involved, and with Bill Preisey. And so we decided that perhaps we need to take the information that we have now, with a year's worth of information coming in with a new utility manager, and perhaps we need to revise the scope of this, of this plan. And so, and I'm sure that Chris can comment as, as well, relative to the irrigation system. So what we have before you is, is instead of doing this full visioning plan, like one of the things that Mr. Senior had mentioned earlier, you know, the, the digital, the digital pictures of what Gateway could look like, instead of reaching for that immediately, let's revise the scope and use Mr. Preisey's skills and this contract to change it from this visioning process to more of a capital planning tool on how to actually get us to a new irrigation system, to how much it would actually cost to do this landscaping. He involved some more of the facilities, and I do believe that we incorporated the park.
Yes, we had the work and the rest.
Incorporated the park and all of the facilities. And so right now, what is before you is, and, and Bill is here to go over the, the revised scope in detail, is an opportunity to reevaluate the commitment that we've made of the $58,000. We're already at almost 10 grand in, as far as the services that he's provided so far. And I believe, you know, to date, we have the inventory established. And you can correct, correct me if you're wrong when you get up here. So it's, we're, we're taking one of those step backs, and we're reevaluating how we can either move forward with this current appropriation of budget and this contract, or what other options you may want to consider.
Bill, question. We've known for three years that the irrigation system is falling apart. We've known it for at least three years. We've had proposals from Mainscape to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of fixing this thing. Cart and a horse, you're exactly right. I, if we're going to be doing a landscape plan, to me, I don't know how you can do any landscape plan at this magnitude that is not inclusive of what it takes to water it, to control the watering, the whole nine yards. I'm not talking about our mains. We know where our mains are, we know all that. What we don't know is where all of our individual irrigation lines are. We usually find them by accident or when somebody cuts one, or it breaks. And the control system, we're on to using those, what do they call them, the nodes. I, I mean, that is old. Nobody uses nodes on a sophisticated system. My question is, does this new plan contemplate the architect bringing in not only the vision for what we're going to build, but how we're going to water it, with all the changes that we need, and? And do you have the background and the knowledge to design and do this kind of work? Or will you sub?
Supervisor Tinkle, I think you pretty much hit the nail on the head. And that's one of the things that, I mean, April really comprehends this process and a lot of the work that we've done through this process very well. It's the old adage, you really can't master plan anything unless you understand the substrate, the foundation it sits on. And what we really ran into here was discovering that there really was a problematic issue, not in terms, not only the irrigation system, but in having more of an accurate inventory of what is actually in existence out here. And I think we could all realize that the greatest asset Gateway has in its landscape are those oak trees.
Are what?
Are the oak trees. I mean, and I know that's, in generality, and I.
That's argumentative.
I was warned. But in any event, yes. And actually, there's still a envisioning component to this. It's just that we've pulled it back to make it much more of a technical approach because you really can't, like you said, you be. I would be wasting your money if I came up with this visionary landscape plan if we really didn't understand what was underneath it and what was supporting it. It really wouldn't be doing you justice. It may really be a great vision that would still work, but it's probably something that would end up sitting aside until you figured out what all the root problems were. So that's what we decided to do, is get back and really look at the underlying substrate and how that relates to the capital planning aspect of it. And then tie a visioning aspect to it with a community outreach at the very end.
My question is, are you going to be doing that design work?
It's not per.
And telling us what needs to be done in the way of added facilities, controls, pipe, heads, sprinklers, the whole nine yards?
Again, I, I need to, I'll pause you on that. It's not so much that I'm going to give you an absolute design across the board of the irrigation system. It's gonna be an audit of the system that'll give you a distinct explanation of what it is you need to do to repair it, what the parts are you need to repair it, how you go about do that, who the manufacturers are, and what the prices will be to do that. The actual design of that would come right after that. It's not an actual design.
How do you do, how do you do pricing if you haven't done the design?
Because you can formulate.
You're doing preliminary estimate.
You, you can estimate, I mean, the, the cost that you're really looking at here is the structure of it. And you have your well system in place, you have your mains pretty much in place.
Yeah, I'm not worried about any of that.
That is pretty much, that, that's not really your issue there. It's all the pieces that makes that operative.
I'm talking about all the things for which we have no ASBILs.
Right.
We don't know where any of it is.
Or even, even bringing this.
This is gonna be an audit. I mean, we're auditing our existing irrigation, coming up with the drawing.
It's an audit, it's an audit with a, with a technical recommendation in terms of what it's gonna take to, to repair it and to design it.
Unless and until you go out and turn it on and see where the heads are at, you don't know where anything is. And you then even assume that you're only.
That's part of the audit.
Pipe that's connecting it, that's all you could do.
And that's part of the audit.
But the new design that we're coming, this is what's got me on this visioning of a new plan or a new look. Will that existing infrastructure, with the assumption that we can fix it, put in the new controllers and all that? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Find it and fix it.
Find it and fix it. Will it serve the new look? That's my question.
Oh, it.
Are we changing the design, the layout, to where we've gotta add in totally different types of heads? Because we, the heads we have will inundate the deal or it's not enough water. That's my question. Does this contemplate doing that detail?
You just asked the question that is the answer to it, is that that is really the deliverable vision at the end of the day. Is creating, is coming up with an assessment of what that vision can be than having something tangible to it.
And that's, so that includes, let's call it current state assessment. So current state landscaping and irrigation and also a future state design, right? And the delta that it's gonna take to get there. So if there's existing lines, the.
Yes, happily.
The new future state doesn't account for this, here's, here's your proposal. What you said you may not have is.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure.
The price.
We will have, we will have a price.
That's what I want.
No, you won't.
I need that irrigation component price, correct.
And that's an important part of it. I mean, it's.
That's big bucks.
It is big bucks.
It's big bucks.
And it's gonna be a tough sell to the community because, I mean, when you're repairing, when you're spending money on lakes and, and various systems, even utilities, people understand water and drainage and the benefit of those repairs.
And this has a good approach, too.
Irrigation is something you're gonna be spending a lot of money on that nobody's gonna see except with the disruption of the repair and the creation.
Or they see it when it's too late and it's dead and brown.
Right.
Because it doesn't have water.
And that's one of the, and that's where the visioning aspect of it comes in, is that, that there will be some justification of why there's a need to, to spend that money to create what you need to move forward.
And if I gave you, so, for our Commons Park or just, you know, Commons Park, Linear Park, even Soccer Park, all that is in scope? Now.
We, we talked about it, though. Not specifically, but it, it's certainly something that I, I have in my mind of that. I don't think you have any existing irrigation out there, but I think we could put that as part.
Or even a landscape plan on how it could be used. And if it's no additional costs, I mean, I think we should.
I kinda have that in, in my mind, April. I really see that as an untouched asset out there.
The one, one of the things, and this is why I bring, bring this up, and I'm glad you said that, is that we have a problem in the summertime, a major problem in summertime. We've got a contract with Lee County and we have got to toe the line on that contract or they can yank that out from underneath us for very good cause. And that is, we have to take every drop of water that comes out of that plant. But when we get days and days and days of rain, nobody's using any irrigation water. But what we have historically done in the past is if you go down Gateway Boulevard, we are flooding it with water because we have no place to discharge. That FPL easement, to me, could be a jewel, a gem for us. If we're gonna go out there and do anything that has to do with irrigation, put in some major blow-off heads like they put on a golf course and get rid of that water that we would normally throw on the streets that would just ruin the landscaping. We put it out there in areas right now that when you go down Gateway Boulevard in August, what does everybody see right across from the Gateway Boulevard deli? You see tire tracks that look like somebody buried a mower.
Standing water.
And why? Because we water it to get rid of water. So we have an opportunity to get that corrected with the.
You've got real water table problems in your landscape.
And get that water out of here. We gotta use it.
Why don't we put it back down in the aquifer?
Uh, that's not legal. We can't do that.
So, and one more thing. So, and if part of your plan, because I'm, I'm sure you're not a parks designer.
Actually, I have a lot of background in parks design.
Okay, all right. Well, then maybe we can work with, with you, not on a maybe specific plan, but maybe just a version 2.0 of what we kinda have today.
Chris and I have talked about this. I just wanna make sure that, I'm, I'm hearing what Bill is saying. I just wanna make sure, Chris, these changes, these additions relative to the idea of irrigation, the discussion of irrigation. Because when it gets down to the trees, the plants, the vegetation, the look of what you're gonna do, what I know about that wouldn't fill a thimble. But I do know one thing, it's gotta have a drink.
Gotta have a what?
A drink.
Oh, a drink.
Gotta have water.
Especially in a roadway.
And right now, I don't know that our system is capable of providing a drink. It's, it's that bad. It needs to be fixed. My question to Chris is, do you feel that the items that we have talked about are addressed with this amendment to the, or a change to the contract?
I'd like one question.
That we're getting that?
Who's gonna be doing the irrigation system assessment design?
That's what I was trying to ask Bill. Is he doing it or are you subbing this?
I'm doing it, but I'm also working with a representative from Hunter and another individual who did the initial ASBIL.
For, for Gateway?
Yes.
Yeah, when you say ASBIL, who?
Do they have a degree in irrigation? Are they a professional engineer in hydraulics?
Steve, Steve has got a background in engineering, or in irrigation that goes back 30 years. He's highly qualified.
Who are we talking about? Who are we talking about?
Is he an engineer? No, I'm not an engineer either, but I'm, but I'm as qualified as any engineer in irrigation.
I'm just gonna make a brief comment because I think what we're gonna end up with is another planning document that sits on a shelf that we can't afford. But when you start to talk about revised assessment, assess the best applications, preliminary draft, general revisions, and they reserve a right opportunity, revisit the scope of these and manner of being fair. When you look at the size of our irrigation system and the capital limit, I think you would need a professional engineer to design the hydraulics in the system and look at that. You certainly aren't gonna do it for $50,000. So if you want another planning document that doesn't have anyone's professional seal behind it, go right ahead, but.
Well, I.
I did Mr. Preisey's contract and the reason I picked it up and brought this to the table was he was given $58,000 worth of purchase orders. When I picked it up last month, there was $2,300 of that billed since August of last year. So we came in and he said, oh, I've actually done $10,000 worth of work. And then all this conversation started. So why it's been languishing six or seven months and what you're gonna get out of this?
Bill, can you come back with a, an addendum to this? That would include, because I, I agree with Chris. We've, we've learned the hard way on some of this stuff. That somebody will stamp this irrigation design, that we know that we've got a professional engineer that's looked at this thing and hydraulically, it will.
Well, that's what I wanted to comment on what Chris said, is I am a professional landscape architect and I have a seal. And my seal is as valid as any PE's would be on this application. I wouldn't take this job and I wouldn't stand here and say that if I didn't have the experience and the criteria behind my license to do so. You don't need a PE to do this. A landscape architect with experience is just as qualified as any PE is to do this assessment.
So then if.
So to answer your question is, yes, it'll have my seal on it.
So if there's any issues on the irrigation system, then you'll toe the line on the design for the.
I wouldn't put my seal on it otherwise.
I personally would like to take a little bit more time to look at this. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision today.
Well, I think, is that the issue?
Just one second.
And is the issue that we were talking about, that this is, the reason this is before, this is the sole issue of the change or the amended agreement?
Just, just one second, please. I thought, I thought Kathy wanted to say something.
Yeah, I did. We have talked about this. We have changed it from the original plan when I was on the landscaping committee. And this was supposed to be just the, well, the original master plan. However, since we, April and Mr. Preisey and I have talked, we have changed it so that it is revised to incorporate more of what we really need, the irrigation. We don't wanna get rid of, like, the oak trees. We want, what we need is the irrigation so that what we have will survive. Because a lot of, if you go down Gateway, you're gonna see a lot of things that are dead that had to be pulled out. We can't keep replacing dead things if we don't have the irrigation to fulfill this requirement. So this is basically what we're trying to do.
So where are we at right now? Didn't we start this in May of last year? So what do we have right now?
We've pretty much concluded category one, where we've done all the inventory analysis and the opportunities constraints. Now, the programming element of that. The other aspect, this was set to be a two-year project. I will still complete it within those two years.
I remember being on this board and pushing back on that two-year. Remember, that was one of the first times, we thought two years was unacceptable for this type of work, come back with a plan.
That was a budgeting.
Actually, it was, it was set up because of a budget.
That's true.
Well, the reason we're here, there's a lot of different reasons why a lot of time has went by and we haven't got as completed as we are. But at this stage, I can say with, with absolute confidence, we would be done a year from now with this, inside of a year.
Chris, what do you need? You, you, you need reassurance that when this document is delivered, it's, it's actionable, that it's engineeringly accurate. Is that?
There's no.
Close.
There's no bid sheets that are coming with this. This isn't designed to construct.
Yeah, it's not designed.
It's a conceptual plan. It's an inventory. We have an inventory. You know, I'd, I'd spend the money somewhere else because if you're gonna get a capital improvement plan that's tight, you're gonna need to, you know, you'd be better off getting a cultural engineer from Deere to come in here and look at the system and the hydraulics and what it needs. And I think if you spent $10,000, so you have $48,000 left, if you think you're gonna get a capital plan, it's not gonna happen. But that's my own opinion.
Well, if you.
If I was gonna take the money, I'd take it and go landscape the pool right now or, you know, go landscape three islands and redo the irrigation if the residents could see something that was happening and something that was being done, not wait another year for a plan. And that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
I could respond to that. If you feel that that is what you need, then we can scope it accordingly.
See, I think the problem ran into, and nothing against the committee, but I don't think somebody knew what a dollar bill was. We've been talking about a whole new look for Gateway. And I'm telling you, we haven't got the money to do the ponds, which could lead to non-compliance and lead to fines. I guarantee you, we don't have money to do this. And I think, translate it, I think that's what Chris was trying to say.
Do we have the money to examine our irrigation system and get some solid recommendations for improvement?
That, that's the point I was trying to get to, Bill. I'm not worried about our irrigation system. I'm worried about our irrigation subsystem, the one that feeds off, through which it go, the water goes through a meter and feeds, I don't know what, last time count, I saw we have 70 billing units, April, that the CDD has. That's, whenever we use water, it's just like a house. Our irrigation on all of our common areas goes through a meter. And I think we have about 70 of them. And on the downstream side of that 70 meters, we have no clue of what's there. Other than when it pops up, if it pops up and the controllers work and the batteries work and all that, we then find out what it is. But what we know, connecting it, what size pipe, we don't know. We don't have any of that. Not one stitch of ASBIL.
I must not have said it right. I was, I was trying to say.
I'm hoping this creates that.
I'm sorry?
I said, I would hope that what he is, what Bill's saying, that the audit creates that and then incorporates what he's planning is the vision to build and what we need to make it work when he gets it built. That then gets into the engineering that Chris is, I believe, talking about. That that's typically more of a design, engineering function.
Chris, can we, if we table this item or can, do you know what requirements should be in order to do something like this, but that is something that we can, that's worth the dollar? Something that's actionable, that, and it could be half of this or it could be a hole plus an engineering specs on top. But I'm just not comfortable, if you're not comfortable, to be honest. Because if we can't, if we can't get it turnkey and be able to say, all right, let's go and take this and build off of it, then it's just, it's nothing more than a picture.
Well, my, my business is water, hydraulics and water supply and where it's going. And we especially are learning meters. I have a good idea of it. But, you know, my opinion is you're gonna get a conceptual plan a year from now that's gonna go on the shelf. And I can show you three more in there right now, landscaping plan for the pool with Zeebo that has all the data ready to put it out to bid, you know, if you wanted to put it out there. So if you wanna spend another $48,000 on a conceptual plan, $48,000.
Well, how do we layer in what it is that, that you need in order to move forward?
Just move, look at the irrigation purely first and to think he's gonna do an assessment where all these heads are and piping and get documents to replace stuff, I don't see it happening. But maybe Mr. Preisey thinks he can make it happen.
Okay.
Kathy, did, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. The purpose is to look at the irrigation system because we keep putting Band-Aids on it. And there's only so many Band-Aids you can put on this irrigation system. We have to figure out where everything is so we know where it is, what we may have, really have to do with it to fix the system because eventually you can't put Band-Aids on it, it's not gonna be replaced. We had holes in the mid, middle of the medium for two months because they were trying to track something. And I had to complain. I says, the holes in the middle of the medium do not look good for them to replace it. We have holes in other places where it's dangerous for people to walk because they're trying to track the electrical things for this irrigation. And, and that's a safety issue. Someone goes into these holes. So we really do need to find out all about this irrigation, where everything is because we can't keep just putting Band-Aids on it and we can't keep putting holes in the middle of our gateway.
The issue is, we have the problem of the existing system. But more importantly, and we know it's got problems, we've been told that. The bigger issue is, is that we're proposing and we have a vision for what we're going to build. The bigger question is, what we've got, will it water adequately, what we're going to build? And that's two totally different issues. Because I, we may go out and find, for example, Zone A, wherever Zone A is at, that has umpteen heads and this, that and the other. But if we're changing it to a different look, and let's say it's plantings that can't take those big rotors, it'll wash them away. Then we got a problem. And vice versa, if we're out there in an area that where we're. Then we got a problem. And vice versa, if we're out there in an area that where we're had basically drip irrigation and we're gonna have, put in something that requires lots of water, we got a problem. There's where I see, so it's, it's a two, uh, headed issue here. One, we gotta find out what we've got and what, what its deficiencies are. Then second, what do we need to make what he's proposing to build work?
Well, you're really, you're talking all about it. It's not just irrigation. It's also, you, you have a landscape that's in its second generation of life.
Oh, yeah.
And we all know that. When it was planted back, when this all was, it's all, but it needs to be rethought and rejuvenated from the standpoint that it's in a different generation. You've got the trees that are now creating complete canopy coverage and some, and in some areas and the like. So you really have to start planning forward towards, you know, not only what irrigation system is gonna do, how you want, what you, you want irrigation system to do. What the plant material gonna be on there, how your management plan ties into how you're gonna take care of those expenditures. I mean, there's a lot of things that you need in a link into this thing. It's just not irrigation system. And that's kind of what our effort is here. And I mean, if, if I'm not explaining that adequately, maybe I'm not doing myself service. But it's not just the irrigation system that, that we'd be assessing and working on.
I, I can get down Doug once, uh, I don't know how we do that. We just don't tell Tony.
No, just don't do it.
Just don't do it. Sit down and get, get with Chris and identify a step-by-step listing of things we feel we need. Get that to Bill and in his judgment, see if those are items that he is going to need outside help with or not.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard that. I think that's a great idea. I was gonna say that, but a lot shorter. You, you think we can get Bill and Chris together to, you know, working together as a team and get back to us with something that they both agree on? So we can move this forward? Would that be agreeable to everybody?
I agree.
I think you'd, I think you'd have better luck letting Kathy work with Bill. Cause him and I have some major fundamental differences. And I'd, I'd like them to explain just briefly my last question or comment on this. The contract was, what was only twenty-three hundred dollars billed since last August? What's happened in the last eight months?
We have, we have discussed that, Chris, and.
We discussed a brief of that and get an answer. I just, what happened in eight months?
In eight months? Well, largely what happened was when the landscape committee disbanded, that really took a lot of the synergy out of the previous effort. Because that really hinged on, the, the entire previous process was geared more towards on the creation of a visioning master planning document.
But I thought you had to do an assessment first, right?
Yes.
So you have to, so you already completed the assessment?
Had the inventory and that done. And we were looking forward at, now we were, we're gonna write the programming element of that. It's how it was going to work into presenting that to the community.
And where's the, do you have the assessment plan?
Yeah.
Oh, I know the answer.
Chris, do you have the assessment plan? You have the, the, the document, the diagram, the CAD drawing, whatever it is of the existing assessment?
I imagine it's here.
Yes, it is. It's here.
And then there was a, a bit of a hiatus there. And then April and I regrouped. And that's when we really thought about, we probably need to rethink this. No, several months, it was a couple of months prior to that. I mean, Chris, I mean, if you feel like this needs to take even more of a technical spin on it, I can make it happen.
I'd refer to Kathy and the landscaping people and L.
I, I know that I had, um, asked several times when I became, when I became a board member. I asked April what was happening. And she says, it was on hold. That was what I was told. It was put back. There was other things that were priority. So that's where I was told it was going. And that's how, why it was not up to date. I, okay.
So Bill, let's, let's table this. I think there's some additional discussions that need to be had before we move forward, period.
Make a motion.
So I make a motion that we table this item until additional conversations happen between staff.
And, and board member Kathy first.
I'll, I'll second that.
Most of the tables that are made the second has to be voted on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you, Bill.
You bet.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll follow up with April.
Six D, ladies and gentlemen, is approved.
Bill, if I could for just one second, one question for, uh, district manager. Task number two oh two, irrigation system auto, Chris, I.
Where are you back on Bill's?
Yeah, just one real quick question. And I think this'll answer the question. Up one receipt of existing documentation and previously conducted system inventories from the client.
And the main scape is down that inventory and the whole segment, all these gonna be regurgitated.
We have all that to give to them.
Okay.
You good?
Yep.
You okay? D, approval installation of streetlights on Griffin Drive. Who's gonna, uh?
I'm motion to approve those lights on.
I'm sorry? You what?
I'm motion to approve those lights on Griffin Drive.
We have a motion to approve the lights on Griffin Drive. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I've got a question.
Can we, can, can you review it for those of us who don't have much of a memory anymore? Is it gonna cost us eighty-one thousand dollars or what?
You've got a good memory. Exactly. But I think that the motion should also add that before we immediately do that, we need to first authorize Bentley to start the permitting process because Rod Senior was correct. This is Lee County's.
It's gonna be Lee County's, right? Yeah.
So, so we need to go to Lee County. And I've already talked to Lee County and I don't think there's any issues. But to, to, to follow up on what Rod said, uh, and regurgitate out there, I totally agree with him. This should not be us having to do this. But I've talked to Lee County and you know what's gonna freeze over, according to them, before those lights go in. They are not going to do it. They have far.
It's not a mini-plan, it's not.
No plan, no, no nothing. They're just not.
We have to get their approval to do it, do we not?
Yes, we do. And they have no problem. Cause keep in mind, our contract is for lighting and signage. That's all our responsibility. And that's the position they're taking. You want lights, you put the lights in. And we have a proposal now to put in nine lights that will be exactly like the ones we have. And we changed the other twenty-six all to LED, which is a cost savings. So based on that, if we just.
All within that eighty?
All on that eighty-two thousand, yeah. So on that, I would second the motion if she will also add authorizing him. Cause I think we want the permitting first. I don't wanna get the cart too far ahead of the horse.
Would the maker of the motion agree to that?
Yes.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second. Any further conversation on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Four zero. Authorized execution of documents to outsource payroll. That, that's April.
Real quick.
Yeah, please.
Uh, this is a housekeeping item. Uh, Stephen and I have been working on this outsourcing payroll. It's cost, should be no more than seventy-five dollars. I think it's actually cheaper. I just wanna work with the vendor paychecks and make sure that we've got all of the right programming in, in place. Because we're a government, they offer a deep discount to us. But it's gonna provide several things for the employees, a port, a portal so they can see their payroll. It's gonna, um, include the paid leave bank, uh, time tracking. Outsourcing payroll was something that we talked about during the S T. Contract negotiation and reorganizing. So this is just a housekeeping item in order to authorize me to execute the documents. Uh, I reached out to Stephen because one of the documents I was concerned about, there's a power of attorney in there. And I'm like, hey, where's the authority with this? And so we wanted to make sure that we escalated it to the board. And I got authorization to execute these, these documents. Yes, please.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve, but I've got a question or two.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
The seventy-five dollars for payroll seems to me like a very little amount.
It is.
The question is, why have we waited this long to be doing this? Why did we do it this way in the first place? No, I don't wanna go there.
Well, and we've, we've had a management company and that's a service that they, that they provide and bundle in their contract. Uh, one of the things that we stepped back and looked at when we, when we got away from the management company and based on some discussions about wanting to go out to bid, we know that that's coming. That we eventually wanna take the, the services that S T. Is providing and eventually create an R F P. And go out to bid. And so this is just one way of isolating our payroll. Um, there won't be any transition with that, you know, regardless who's doing the rest of our books.
And they have all the insurances and the bonds and everything that have to be to do this.
Paychecks and A D P. Are the two, two largest companies that I can really see. Um, the difference being that A D P. Kind of caters to the big businesses like S T. S T. Has A D P. Paychecks kind of caters to the smaller guys. And so I just thought that it would be a better fit.
All of the legal requirements to cover us that they're doing this kind of work and.
Yep.
What do you call it? Having access to.
And S T. Has other clients that have outsourced payroll. Um, so we have to work on some logistics reporting and stuff. But I'm gonna work with them closely to make sure they get what they need.
Paychecks is a large corporation started in Western New York.
Yeah.
And it's all, yeah.
So, and normally with paycheck and A D P. More familiar with A D P. Than I am paycheck, but they also offer H R. Services and.
That's exactly what, what I was, what I was looking at capitalizing on.
Okay, so you've, you've evaluated their additional products and services.
Right. And that doesn't, that's not included in the seventy-five dollars.
Nice try.
But what I'm saying is you've evaluated both.
Right.
And you feel like even like paychecks aligns better with our, with what our needs are.
Because of our future needs and wanting to develop our H R. Function, I think the, I think the organization that caters to smaller businesses is going to be a much better fit for us.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you've, you've evaluated both sides.
There's an opportunity.
Yes.
I have, Kathy has questions.
Okay. You only looked at two. There is no others in the state?
Uh, this is our payroll. And no, I did not look at any other than, other than the two, the two best ones that, that I know.
I'm just saying there are others that could have been looked at. I looked them up, South Florida payrolls. I have a bunch. Payroll master service, absolute payroll. There's a couple more.
Yeah, I, I went with, with what, what's known.
Tried and true.
But I, I, as a government service, we need to look at others besides just two. So we have something else to examine.
Well, and definitely with those services, I mean, we can, I mean, this is, this is what I'm recommending as far as just staying with the mainstream and not go too far off the reservation. I mean, definitely, definitely as we proceed, you know, and get set up with them to, to keep a check on that.
Are all of our employees on direct deposit?
I believe yes.
Because some of the new firms will require direct deposit. If you haven't looked into that, I suggest you do. And secondly, the seventy-five dollars, does that include transmital funds to federal state, uh, governments?
And all of, all the related reporting.
And all the related reporting and the production of, of W. Twos at the end of the year?
Yep. And we'll have an employee portal. You'll be able to go back and print out your W. Two again. You'll be able to see if you need to go out and print out a series of pay stubs off. It's, it's very, very mobile.
And doesn't paychecks also have a full, fully mobile capable apps for both employees and employer?
I believe, I believe so.
I think it's pretty standard.
That's, that's a heck of a price. That's just an unbelievable.
All right, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Three, one. Motion to carry it. Consider changing pool hours. Is that, Chris, is that you?
That's me.
Oh, that's you. I was trying to give you a chance to sit there for us.
Okay, so one of the reasons, we have three sets of times for the pool. We have daylight savings times, standard times, and then we have these three months that we extend the pool hours an extra hour between seven and eight. We struggle with, with scheduling because there's not a lot of redundancy built in on the schedule with the part-time staff up there at the school. Because it is open seven days a week, uh, long hours. I, I think staff gets there at six-thirty. Um, and sometimes doesn't leave until eight o'clock during the summer. And then they have been, their, their responsibilities increased, um, with trying to secure the soccer facility. So they leave the pool facility when they're done there and they go over to the soccer facility and they're to make sure that our restrooms are locked up. Uh, they do an inspection to make sure that, that our restrooms haven't been trashed. And then lock the gates if they can, if there's nobody on the field. And we won't, we will work on a new procedure for that. So what happens is part-time employees need to work thirty hours or less. And so when they have a vacancy, um, we've been, we've been tracking time for quite some time. And, uh, and they're, they're exceeding that. And so during the summer, there's some staff that takes off some time. Um, and that has been granted historically. And that has been discussed, uh, recently with management and different ways that we can manage that. But one of the, one of the ideas was to just close the pool between seven and eight and that would give us some more time. And we looked at, I had Holly. Holly keeps track of all of her numbers, all of her attendance, the different times at the pool. And I believe, cause one of the questions was, well, how many people is this gonna affect if we close the pool? So she, she did it for two years, these three months, and it averages from, you know, it's like the, the most people that it would impact is, it looks like to be about six in two thousand and sixteen, seven. So on average, with all of this data, I think it was like two to six people during that hour of keeping staff up there. And then still after eight o'clock, um, they're, they don't have to go to the soccer complex when it's closed. But I don't think that the soccer complex will be closed for three months.
So this is ninety days for one hour. And how many people, two?
Six.
How many people, no, how many people work?
One.
One. So ninety times one person for one hour at thirteen dollars an hour is eleven-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
Plus fringe benefits.
Well, plus, plus the issue of the, of.
I guess my deal is, is that a lot of people that work, that's, could be one of the times that they would wanna have access for.
Six people.
Yeah. Well, that's six years, six, six people two years ago. I don't know what it is now. But my point is eleven-hundred-and-seventy plus fringe benefits, going twenty percent, you're at fourteen-hundred bucks. I don't know if it's worth it.
So.
Now, we had three.
Why would it not be worth it?
If we had three staff people up there.
I don't even know why we have staff up there anyway.
Well, somebody has to close it.
Yeah.
Somebody has to close it at, at eight o'clock. So I understand that. I'm just, I don't know what repercussions we're gonna get back. But we're, we're talking about, uh, an awful small amount for what could upset quite a few people.
And I never want to impact the residents without coming to the board with, with that discussion.
Yeah, why don't you go first?
I have a couple of things. Okay. Is there any reason that we don't, couldn't get a substitute?
That is one of the things that we're looking at is additional staffing.
Right, substitute. Also, if you wanted to close the pool, why couldn't you, um, make it from eight in the morning instead of seven in the morning? Because I really do feel that you're taking away from the residents, especially those who work, um, swimming at night is the best time to swim.
Well, the, one of the reasons why we looked at the afternoon, um, hours is because for a lot of these days, the pool is automatically closed when it starts lightning.
Oh, yeah.
I have one more thing. And it says, the full-time staff has acquired more administrative duties. Now that we hired, his name is Michael, couldn't he take some of those administrative duties? And that would give that full-time staff more time there. So that way your part-timers could be working effectively.
Right. I definitely, I definitely think that we can look at alternative ideas, uh, additional, additional staffing, um, renegotiation, renegoti, renegotiating duties and responsibilities.
Doesn't sound like you have a unanimous, uh, board that wants to change the time. Why don't you think about some other alternatives?
Okay. All right, we'll leave the time as it is.
And, and I, just real quick, um, one, I, I lifeguard, uh, ever since I was in high school at pools. I'm sure we could look at alternatives, um, for the peak times, which is during the summer, which is when, you know, uh, we could probably find, uh, some, some additional assistance. Two, I want to go back and look while we're having full-time individuals at a pool, that the volume just, just does not make sense to have someone sit at that pool all day long when you, I, I bet you we don't have fifty people there a day on average. So, and I love that we're giving them additional administrative responsibilities, then put them in more an administrative role and have them go and maybe rent, you know, check on the pool or, or be there during certain peak hours. Having someone sit full-time at that pool, I think is a huge waste of time. And I think the most important question we should ask is, why is the, the volume at that pool so low? When we're in Florida, it's because one, it's, there's nothing to it. It's a lap pool. So that's something we also need to look at is improving. Uh, and not to mention, most people have pools in their backyard, which is fine, but you know.
And that was just during that hour.
And there's just one person at, at, at the pool all day?
But I, I look at the numbers.
There's just one staff person there? No more, is it?
Well, there's, there's two shared between a, between a shift. And there's just a very short time in the middle of the day that they overlap.
But we have the numbers, cause I've seen Holly's numbers. I think they keep track of how many poolgoers are there every day. And the numbers are abysmal. I mean.
They're very, they're very small, but you're not, you're not recommending that we have nobody in a, in a pool.
I recommend, well, do you have a lifeguard on duty at your pool?
We don't have a pool. At, at the country club? Heavens, no. Swim at your own risk. Swim at your own risk.
So, I mean, again.
But you gotta have somebody to clean though.
No, that's fine.
We don't have a lifeguard either.
You gotta have somebody to call one-one-one if you have a, if you have an accident. You gotta have somebody to call one-one-one if you have a, if you haven't answered that.
That's one, that's swim at your own risk.
What?
That's part of swim at your own risk.
How many times have we done that?
One since I've been here.
So, I'm not saying we remove, I'm just saying that I don't know if it's the best use of, of time for the individuals that we have serving there.
Okay, you're gonna think about some other stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
What, what's tobacco about?
Hold on, let me spit.
We're all gonna spit or instead of smoking, is that it?
I'm gonna hurry up because I know Mr. Guy's Lexus is starting to turn into a pumpkin.
That's good.
Just ask the board for some direction, because like other government properties that are all non-smoking, we're the only ones that let people come in here, employees and otherwise, and smoke. On property, you mean? And that includes the pool, you know, do you let your employees or people come to the pool and smoke? And I just wanted a little direction, 'cause I'd like to have a no-smoking policy for this property. And I told the employees, if you wanna smoke, you can be like the teachers, go over there and park an autograph.
Kathy?
Okay. Three six six point two zero two, Florida, Saskatchewan. Hey, generally prohibit smoking in and closing doors, however, you know, wordless. However, it does not cover outdoor policy, and there should be limited smoking in outdoor policy at certain areas. So, my suggestion is to designate an area where, I don't know how many people smoke, I know there's lots of them.
Picting table across the street.
It, wherever it is. Somewhere should be a designated smoking area outside. And I did, when I come, came by today with Freddie, I saw the little smoking thing. So, that could be moved somewhere away from the building, somewhere in the corner.
Give them three weeks and say, figure out a place to smoke outside, no, no more in here and no more in the vehicles.
It's hard to enforce them on them, I look at it too, 'cause I see some employees, and every hour they're out there smoking a cigarette, and I go, ten minutes, an hour, eight hours a day, eighty minutes. I appreciate that.
But I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, it's your, it's your job to, to make it work.
Yeah, I don't think you need our approval to go do that type of stuff. Just do, do the job.
I don't, I do, I agree.
Okay.
That's good.
Seven, seven walk-on items. Who's got a walk-on items? We already walked on, Phil.
We already walked.
Who, is there any more walk-on items? Supervisor comments, Ed?
Yeah, a couple. I would like to, and you kinda led into it a while ago, the getting with Chris and starting the process on the metering, metering, the billing and all of that, and we're working on some numbers for flows. A whole bunch of stuff that needs to be tied together and get that started. But we got another issue that, in my opinion, as a result of this bond validation, that showed a weakness. Nineteen eighty-six, we were given a methodology for assessments here in Gateway, and we haven't touched it for fourteen, seventeen, thirty-one years. It's time to visit our assessment methodology, and my recommendation would be that we would retain Russ Wire, very good guy that did our work, did our work, and get started on the procedure of amending and coming back with a proposal for changes to our methodology, and this is one of the main reasons why I'm doing it. As a result of the letter that went out, I mean, it is the talk of, at least Gateway Greens. And whenever people see something like this, they usually get their pencil and their calculator. These ponds to the Gateway Golf and Country Club is one million dollars. And when I start looking around and talking to Russ and talking to Chuck Adams that used to be here years ago, that's now Rathell Hunt.
Yeah.
And checking other CDs, come to find out that we are one, if not the only, that charges country clubs and a tax assessment. The others don't do it. They don't do it.
Does that make it right?
It's, I think it makes it right from the sense of fair and equitable. I think we need to revisit it. Now, Russ and I have some differences of opinion, but I'd still say he's a good guy. He knows what he's doing.
Is that, is this something we really need to tackle now with everything else we've got going?
Yes, we really do, because we got it, we, it's a timing issue with our budget coming up to be able to be. Russ can do this in ninety days. He can have this thing put together in ninety days, and it's really simple. It's essentially taking what we have right now, a stormwater-based system, and leaving it with our stormwater, only tweaking it, as we found out it needs to be tweaked because of some of the amendments and other stuff that, that Tony keeps finding in his archives. But we have other things like roads, landscaping, signage, parks and recreation that have nothing to do with stormwater. They need a different scenario. Let's let the pros come in and tell us, but I don't wanna make a motion tonight to immediately retain him. I'd like to have him come back to us with a proposal of what he would recommend that we do and tie it in with the billing.
Tony?
Just one comment, and we've talked briefly about it. I would suggest, I think it's a good idea, that I would suggest that that retention be the next budget, but in, the work not begin until after you adopt this year, the next year's budget.
It, it, it may have to.
Because it would be for the assessments for the following year.
The timing to do this is, is gonna take some time.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's.
I think it is a good idea based upon passage of time as well as other, other aspects. And Russ is good to work with.
Are you finished?
One, one other item just for the board. I thought we'd have a repercussion from it tonight, but evidently the letter, you, did you sign it? Hampton?
Oh, no, I had a con, I wanted to talk to you about that, but.
It hasn't gone out yet?
No.
That's why there wasn't a repercussion. I drafted a letter, Tony has seen it, I believe everybody has seen it, a letter going to Lennar, putting them on notice that Hampton Park, I think I came up with four issues, is, is not, is not acceptable, and it really won't be acceptable if they continue doing what they're doing. We got some real significant problems there, and the last thing I wanna do is add fourteen more ponds to sixty-four. And these fourteen that would come in would go to phase one.
You gotta put them on notice.
I know we do.
Yeah, and, and follow up with Chris said, Chris had, I don't know if you had an opportunity to mention to Mr. Tinkle a little variation on the letter that we, we talked about, so.
Well.
I think it needs to go out, but I think there's an additional, like I said, another conversation to have briefly.
Well, there was something else that happened too. I just found out, talking to, to L. They have gone through, as I understand it, their five-year mitigation plan on the wetlands.
The monitoring?
Yeah. Why they're not in here trying to get those over to us is beyond me, but I, what I know about wetlands wouldn't fill a thimble, but I know a weed when I see one, and those seven wetlands out there are full of weeds. My thing is, is that we need to also get our pro, our expert out and get that.
Assess.
Assessed to be able to tell them, the letter that I've drafted for, for Chris to send does not include the wetlands. And in fact, we simply indicate that, that we don't have enough knowledge on it, but we need to find out, 'cause one of these days, these guys are gonna be coming in here. Two weeks ago, when we had that meeting, they made it clear, they wanna turn this stuff over. Well, we're not taking no more things, the junk is exactly right of what we've got. And along that line, Chris, were you going to bring up, or do you want me to bring up the approval, or do you even need an authorization to retain the surveyor to go out and do the surveys? You, you're good.
In fact, that's the thing where Chris and I, Chris mentioned it, 'cause I thought it was a good idea.
That's all I have, Bill.
I just got a couple of quick things. So, in preparation for the town hall around the assessment discussion, I met with, with Diana briefly, and we need some type of visual, it's probably a two-page document. It's just a, a visual that we can hand out, that's easy to understand, that outlines what are we really asking for? It's the assessment that.
A chart.
Yeah, that, that, X, Y, and Z, and Russ and I have talked about that. I don't know if he talked with you about that at some of our conference calls, about having a handout, you know, simple, anybody can understand. And, and, and again, when I was a prosecutor, one of the best lessons I ever had was from a Milwaukee County prosecutor that says, whenever you have a jury trial, address the jury, present your case to the jury as if they are seventh graders without insulting their intelligence.
Well.
And, you know, and it's not insulting anybody's intelligence, but it's to make it understandable.
Well, maybe that's fitting, 'cause I was gonna volunteer to put the document together and it just very easily.
You know, we can put you together with Russ, if that's okay.
Yeah. Just a, just a quick, like, just a, 'cause I, I went over something with, with her, and I should say, this is really something that's easy to understand.
The letter that's going out, that I drafted, that he tried to legalese.
I did a little bit.
Has the document, or the, the stuff in there that you can make a chart.
You know, let's just throw some things.
I agree, it needs to be done, 'cause when people see what this dollar value is, they'll understand why we're doing it.
I think if.
And what we're asking for right now versus what we may ask.
What I would suggest is if you can create that, send it to me, and I'll send it to Russ and copy you an email, so then you, he can talk about those kind of graphics.
You do bring a question. How is that deal going to be handled? What's the logistics, how's this gonna work?
Who's facilitating, who's moderating?
Well, it's not really a town hall, it's actually a public hearing.
Okay, so, we're not going to have a presentation?
Yeah, well, I, I envision a presentation by the engineer, by Russ, and by myself to make the presentation. I will keep it nice. How's that? And I work with Chris and April.
I don't worry about nice, it's your legalese that's got everybody confused.
I'll try to be less formal, technical.
So, two last things really quick.
And Russ is good about explaining things too.
Oh, I know where else is, yeah.
So, Chris, up at the pool, I guess there's, there's new tanks that are out there, part of the natural gas. There's the old tanks, they're still there, they took the fence down around them. Yeah, so they're, they're gonna be removed. And it's not, probably had some, excuse, like as Holly said, that I got on the phone today and talked to manager.
Oh, no, that's nasty language, I always say that.
So, those tanks will be gone, and it'll be nice and pretty again. Okay, 'cause honestly, I didn't even realize.
Those are valuable, don't take them.
Cover the rest.
Yeah, yeah. And the last thing, Chris and Gapp, congratulations on having a full senior team. So, the vision that we had is at least in place at the top. So, now it's time to move on to the next, next piece.
Yeah, sardines in a can is what it is.
Continue, you know, driving productivity and efficiency, and it's a great job. You've got, you've got that, that senior leadership level in place, so now continue to move down to the next level.
He's trying to get out of ponds, is what he's wanting to do.
Kathy?
I do, I love ponds.
Do you have things?
I do, okay. First of all, I wanna thank you, Chris, for coming to our meeting in Stony Brook on Monday. He did have a bunch of flyers and stuff that satisfied many of the residents there, okay? The second thing is for the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we had, remember we're having that parking problem with the charter schools?
Yes.
Okay, well, now having that same kind of problem with Brown Academy. They're parking in, on Gateway and the landscaping, so what can we do? Because they're just gonna start destroying that landscaping too.
What I would suggest, if the people are parking and destroying landscaping, adverse effect.
They're pulling off the road, just like the charter school.
I would suggest a, a letter, you know, to them saying, you know, we have an issue, or you're, you're constantly doing this, pulling off of the right-of-way, parking room and landscaping, and then when Lee County finally owns the roads, then they will probably have traffic enforcement regards to that.
I, I'm just concerned that we have to.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a good point.
I saw him doing it the other day.
And I guarantee if Chris are able to pick up the phone and call Franny, the owner. And just say, hey.
Oh.
Yeah, she'll be more than happy to communicate something out.
He just sold to somebody, didn't he?
Yeah, but it, it hasn't fully executed yet, but.
So, it's two-step process, is a good idea.
A, a phone call would be more than enough, I would imagine, for her to get something out.
What else you got, Kathy?
Okay, I, when I, I came on the board, I asked Ms. White about staff meetings, and now I, then I asked you about staff meetings. Has there been any staff meetings since December through May?
Not at my level, I'm able to have them, and I was really waiting till Mike got here and then pulled the team together, because when I talk to, you know, every day and Kenny, but with Mike here and then budget coming up, yeah, we'll have meetings probably every other week.
Because I was thinking that, I've always been in places where we had staff meetings, well, in my case, twice a month, so, with everybody. So, I would, you know, think that that would be an important thing, and I would like to be there just to listen, okay? Thank you. And the third thing I have is I decided to go back on the internet. And I looked for all possible grants for the ponds. So, I'm just gonna give you these, these don't have the grants, they have lists and grants. There was applications, I did not print the applications. All right, so, this is just because I think that we need to investigate grants, there are, because the, for the ponds, and I think the money is getting into.
Can you, can you send a copy of this to Danny in the tech stack, 'cause I think they've done a lot of research around grants.
Well, you could send the. I just, these are just quickly, I'm even sure if it's in the proper places. I just, you know, try to figure out some things.
If we were in Lehigh, we might be able to do it.